Okay. Good evening, everyone. Today is January 16th, 2024. It is 6:01 PM. We are at 100 Polk Avenue here in the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, at City Hall Council Chambers for our first regular city council meeting of 2024. With that, I call this meeting to order. Now, Mayor Pro Tim, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here as well today. And for those of you who are live streaming. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Everyone's here. I'm going to go ahead and approve the agenda as written or with amendments. Any changes to the order or any agenda items we want to move or add?
I have none there.
Seeing, I know that there was some discussion about potentially an agenda item that came up during public comment, and I do see quite a few cards here from the Portside Villas. As a matter of the council's willing, spoke with the city manager prior. This is sort of a watered-down add-on agenda item, but he's going to give an update for those who are here with us today to try and help.
That's okay, council? Okay. City Manager? Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure how many folks are here for Portside Villas, but I wanted to let you know that this afternoon, a default letter was forwarded via email to the operators of the aggregate storage facility enumerating the concerns expressed that we've heard for the last couple of months from everyone here and that our code enforcement officers have witnessed themselves, requiring a very, I think it's 10 days, Anthony, a resolution within 10 days. Further, there was a notice of violation sent to the property owner. That is, the property just north of the Portside Villas property, that notice of violation also went out. So, there's two different approaches going forward as of today. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, council. Any comments or questions on that at this time? We'll hear some of those during public comment. If not, we'll go ahead and move forward with a presentation from our city attorney. It's a refresher on Roberts' rules. We try to do this once a year. And if ready, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, sure.
Just thank you.
The mic on.
Mr. Mayor, shouldn't we be voting on the agenda?
Didn't you already do that?
You are correct. Point of order. Thank you, Councilmember Willis.
I make a motion that we accept the agenda as written.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Councilmember Davis. Any further discussion? City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes 5-0. City Attorney?
Okay, I want to, good evening, everyone. I'm going to start off the presentation by saying a point of order is always in order and can interrupt the flow of a meeting. So, that's, that's the first part of my presentation. May as well go right into it. So, this may look familiar to most of you because we went through this a couple of years ago. So, this is really just an overview of Roberts' Rules of Order. Hopefully, you all have been getting very comfortable with Roberts' rules. You know, we have a new councilwoman now, so this may be a little bit new for her. So, the refresh is also important because you may pick something up that you didn't pick up the first time I gave the presentation. If you want me to just skip slides, let me know. So, next slide. Okay, everyone should be familiar that Roberts', the city council adopts rules of procedure, and part of the rules of procedure specifically state that the, that the city council will be governed by Roberts' Rules of Order to the extent applicable. And Roberts' Rules is just a rule of parliamentary procedure that's been around for well over 100 years and used by many municipalities, counties, and governing boards of all kinds. There are, of course, Roberts' Rules is a nice guideline, trying not to get caught up in knots. Certainly, Roberts' Rules does not supersede Florida statutes, charter, the city code, and quasi-judicial rules because those, those types of exceptions take precedent over Roberts' Rules, certainly. One of the big points of Roberts' Rules is the presiding officer. In this case, it's the mayor, and, and the mayor is the chair. And under Roberts' Rules, the chair acts impartially and presides over the meeting and does his or her best to try to enforce the rules with parliamentary guidance. Next slide. What are parliamentary, why are parliamentary rules necessary? Well, all meetings of a governing governmental board must, must use some sort of proper procedure. Roberts' Rules certainly promotes civility and decorum. They assist the governing board to do business of the, of the, of the board in a decent, respectful, and fair way. Without a certain set of guidelines and rules, it would be very difficult to orderly transact the business of, of the city. So, one, one of the key points that's inherent in Roberts' Rules is that Roberts' Rules is intended to ensure that the majority of the council has a right to decide. The minority doesn't make decisions. It's always the majority of the board. However, the minority also has a right to be heard. So, while the minority may not prevail in any given action taken by the board, the minority of the board has a right to be heard, and then the governing body by majority has a right to make the decision. Period, end of story. You can only imagine if it was flipped the other way around, you would never conduct business. So, you know, the purpose is to try to create, create an atmosphere and, and a setting in which you make, you know, legally supportable actions. Their actions of the board may not always be correct or the best, but, you know, at least from a procedural standpoint, you try to make, try to make those decisions in, in proper order. Next slide. There are, you know, common problems that under, you know, that's frequently talked about, you know, that you'll hear as the, you know, not presenting matters through the, through the mayor or the chair. Now, the chair not only presides over the meeting and tries to keep order, but matters need to be presented through the chair. Members of the public, when they come and speak under public input, should be addressing the chair. It's, Roberts' Rules is designed to try not to create, you know, personalities or, you know, personal attacks or, or addressing individual members of, of the board specifically. Work through the chair. Typically, when that doesn't occur, you, you start to see a breakdown in decorum, and, you know, and then you have like an all, you know, Katy by the door type situation when everybody's talking over each other, and, and then what happens is the business of the board just suffers. You know, council members making suggestions or referrals and assuming action is ordered is not the way to conduct business. You need, the council needs to make sure that, under the rules of procedure, that a majority of the council members are agreeing to take certain actions. So, the direction is very clear to the city manager and staff on how to implement the action taken by the council. You know, another problem is council members or the public straying off the subject or an agenda item. This tends to happen from time to time. You know, an agenda item is, is one, typically one subject matter, and that agenda item is what needs to be addressed. So, when the agenda item comes up, you, you waste valuable time by straying off subject, by bringing other unrelated matters into the discussion, you know, by going back and addressing previous items on the agenda. You know, valuable time is lost. The focus needs to be on the subject agenda item of the moment. When you, when you stray off cost, off, off a task, it causes a lot, obviously, a lot of confusion, especially if you start mixing apples and oranges in the discussion. Next thing you know, everybody in the room is lost and forgets what the subject matter of the item is. You know, council members and observers not understanding a motion or the vote. It's very clear, it's very important that, you know, the mayor as the presiding officer, you know, makes it clear what, what the actions are or the motions are that's, that are presented to the board, so it's clear to the council members who are voting what, what the motion is on the floor for, for decision. It also keeps the, the public fully informed and engaged in, in the meeting. Next slide. Another, other common problems is, is you need to do a little bit of homework, and you need to try to study the basic rules of, of Roberts' Rules in order to, you know, actively engage in a meeting. You know, the rules are not intended to, to, to be a tool to play games or to hinder the, the city council from conducting business. They're there to really help guide the governing board to make the decisions as a major, as a majority of the members see it. Again, majority is what matters, not, you know, the minority at the end of the day if it's a split vote. So, respecting the rules is very important because when you respect the rules, you know, the governing body makes decisions in a respectful manner, and, and hopefully the citizens appreciate that. Next slide. So, there are, this is an important, very important slide. It's just fundamental principles, and the council, you're all experienced in dealing with agenda items, but there's a flow to handling a, a city council agenda. The agenda's there to present issues for the city council to consider and to make decisions upon. You know, the, the agenda item is really the, the question that's being brought to the council for action. So, the agenda items are presented. The items include background information that are presented by staff. You take public input. The council members then have the ability to ask questions for information rather than, you know, debating. You know, the dialogue of the council doesn't always need to be argumentative or, or debate. Councils can freely ask questions to bring information before the council, so you make a clear, educated decision. Then a motion is made, and then, once a motion is made, which of course requires a motion, and then a second, it becomes, it gets presented on the floor for debate, and then the council members can debate the motion that is on the floor, and then ultimately you vote. So, that, those bullet points is, is, is the fundamental flow of, of, of an agenda item that the councils see, you know, get many of them on the agenda tonight. So, as always, a motion is required for the members to understand what's expected of them, what, and also what staff is expecting, is expected to do if the motion passes. Only one main question is presented at a time, and that question has to be clear. Next slide. Fundamental ground rules, no members shall speak or interrupt until recognized by the chair. You know, we, we talked about no personal remarks or attacks are allowed that, you know, not only from the members of the governing body, but that should not be accepted during the course of a meeting by the members of the public as well. And you always refrain from attacking a member's motives. You know, there can be certainly fair debate, and everybody has a different, can have a different opinion about a particular matter. Finality of a motion, sometimes it's easier said than done, especially after, you know, dealing with a, a matter for, for months upon months, but there's certain finality. When the majority of the council votes and they give direction on an item, then that decision needs to be respected, and, you know, there's no more debate about it, and we move on to the next order of business. The rules are, the rules are not intended to allow the same item to be presented again and again and again in order to, you know, you know, try to overturn direction of the, of the city council when that direction, it's not appropriate to overturn. Next slide. Those are just, you know, fundamentals about, you know, making, making motions. I'm not going to cover that. Next slide. There are a lot of different key motions, and I think we've provided a copy of this to council, and, and I'm sure the clerk will, will give a copy of this PowerPoint presentation to our new councilwoman. It just lays out some of the different types of motions. These are the kind of motions that they call subsidiary motions, and, and they're just an order of precedent. Closed meeting, recess, you know, complaints, like if you want to raise a question of privilege, you'll see in red, I, I put interrupt. You know, that's always permitted. You know, if there's a question of privilege that a council member wants to raise during the course of a meeting, you certainly can raise those questions of privilege, and those should be taken up immediately. Next slide. Again, more, more examples of motions. Next slide. Another, another enforcing the rules, point of order. That's another one of those that can be brought up at any time. We've already heard one of those tonight, so it's perfectly appropriate to, to raise a point of order at any time. Next slide. Questions of parliamentary procedure. If a council member has a question of parliamentary procedure during the course of an item, you know, it's appropriate to raise that at any time. Also, point of information is another good example where a council member, if they need to raise a point of information on a matter, you know, it's appropriate to interrupt the, the flow of the, of the, of the item. Next slide. One of the points is that, like, there's a, take them, take an item from a table and in, in a, in a motion to, and to rescind, they're kind of, and, and a motion to reconsider. Sometimes those, those three items are kind of morphed into, one, they're, they're separate matters. When a council tables an item, then it, it stays on the table unless the council, by motion, moves it, takes it from the table. It's a way to, you know, suspend an item. A motion to postpone, it's not on this slide, postpone to a date certain is a more definitive way to suspend an item. The item would be suspended with a date certain to return for further action. So, those two motions, table and postpone to a date certain, are two different, have two different meanings, just to keep that in mind. You know, there is abilities to rescind prior actions of the council, but some items, you know, cannot be rescinded. But, you know, that's a, that's a, that's another way to deal with something that's already been decided. Next slide. This goes back to, you know, respecting the rules. Dilatory motions are always improper from a parliamentary standpoint for purposes of delaying or obstructing the business. If, if the council ever found itself in, in a position where there's dilatory motions constantly being made, the council has a right always to protect itself from those types of dilatory motions. Again, the minority is, cannot constantly make motions that are not in order and could stop business. The majority of the, the council ultimately has to prevail to make, make a decision. Next slide. And that's kind of it. That's just a brief, brief summary. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you may have. We can move on to the rest of the business.
Any questions, council, for City Attorney? I just want to say thank you. I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Going through it, and yes, having those slides, going back through them. If they didn't change from last year, I think we, we still have them, but...
No, we didn't, I didn't change them.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, and with that, we can go ahead and move on to public participation portion of the meeting. For those of you who are listening from home, we ask that if you'd like to participate, we're going to hear the folks, residents, community members that are here today at City Hall. But if you raise your hand online using the tool there, I will be able to see it and unmute you, and I'll prompt once we go to the public livestream. And again, thank you all for joining. The first card I have here is Ray Zawaki. Mr. Ray, if you want to go ahead and come forward. Those of you who haven't spoke, we have lights here that help. Once it's green, we'll have three minutes. At yellow, you've got 30 seconds, and when you're asked to wrap up, right at three minutes when the light goes red. Mr. Zawaki, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and council for allowing us this opportunity to, once again, express our, our concerns about our, what, what our neighbors are, are actually doing to us in Portside Villas. And my concern is that this, we, we've been there, my wife and I, for about eight years, and this has been, all the codes have been in place for all that time, but yet it seems that they've gotten to the point where they've got, they've gotten too big, and now all of a sudden, we're doing something. But at least I appreciate the fact that, that, you know, there is code enforcement, that we've gotten the attention, and that they're actually starting to do that. I would be interested if somebody could give us a document as to which codes they are addressing, whether it's a building of a, a sound wall so that, you know, we're not disturbed 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and sometimes thereafter, whether it's a building a, some sort of a barrier so that the debris of the dust and, and, and sand and whatnot does not blow over onto our property. So, I'd be interested if the council could somehow get us a list of those codes that are being addressed, if not all the codes which should be addressed. So, thank you very much. I need more, no more time.
Thank you. David Edens?
Good evening. Well, I just want to mention that everything Ray says is basically true. I bought a couple of those condos at Portside during pre-construction, had a beautiful area next door to us, behind us there. I mean, you had, you had the trees next door, behind us there, it was beautiful, was all built up and everything. And since that timeframe, I have a, I'm renting one of my condos out now, a three-bedroom that I lived in since the beginning for the first 15 years when they were built. And, and I just had one of my tenants just move out because of the noise and the dirt on the back porch. It's just, I mean, it's terrible. I mean, the conditions are, I don't know, you shouldn't, nobody should have to live like that. 7 o'clock, 7:30 in the morning, you got the backup of these vehicles out there, the dirt's blowing all over, and it's just, and it's unsightly. I mean, I don't think anybody wants to live like that, but that's my concern, and I appreciate you all listening to it.
Thank you, Mr. Edens. Frederick Weiss?
Good evening. I just want to say what a beautiful place Portside is, and we really appreciate your help. You know, we've lost our view of the cruise ships. They just keep making the dirt piles higher and higher. It's like a junkyard back there. They had shipping containers stacked three, four high. They've got what looks like a bunch of broken down vehicles. It, it just looks like a hazard back there. It's, it's, it's so unsightly. It's just, it doesn't look like Cape Canaveral. I mean, I understand that we're next to the port, and things happen at the port, but the way they're maintaining the property is just, it's, it's not standing with why we moved here and why we love Cape Canaveral so much. So, I really hope you guys can help us straighten this out, re, re-beautify our, our area, and, you know, everybody just get along. Everybody's learn, learn to live together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. LeAnn Cox?
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us here. I'm from Portside as well. I'm going to look at my notes just because I would like somebody to maybe explain the process to me. I was asking about what Ambassador Services and some of the other, I guess, holdings, what their violations have been. So, let me just share this with you. I asked how many code violations Ambassador received. They received none. Martin Marietta, one, and approximately six discussions regarding violations, which were remedied on site. Now, where did those discussions take place? And if they're remedied on site, is there somebody that is on site, or is this through conversation, and they just tell you that they did it? Or does somebody go out, and now, so you went out, and it's fixed, and it's all in compliance, and now the next day or two weeks later, they revert back to what they were doing? And then, let's clean it. Coast holdings. They had no violations. However, violations are being reviewed. BRB, two, which were remedied until recent event, until recent events. So, I'm wondering, how does this take place? And I also want to know, is there a man whose first name is Randy, I don't know his last name, that has some kind of a stronghold on the council? And those are my questions, and can you tell me the process of when there's a code violation, what happens?
Thank you, Ms. Cox. I know that, that the procedures, our administrative staff can, can go over with you. Follow state statute, I think, chapter 160, or, I don't want to quote statute.
I'm going to need anything in talk that I can understand. Okay? Please.
Yeah, it's a, it's a process that I think one of our city staff, the city manager, can, can go through with, or email you.
Email would be perfect.
Mayor, if I could suggest, if you could appoint a person, what, a single point of contact for Portside Villas for this matter, and have that person meet up with Dave sitting here in the front row, and he will forward all that information to you and answer all those questions.
Okay. And I'm guessing that should probably be the, our, our board president as opposed to me, just a resident. But I do appreciate you getting back to me, and it was Brian Palmer and Mr. Dickey that did answer me, and I appreciate that. But these were just some other questions that I had regarding it. So, thank you very kindly, and I appreciate all that you do.
Mayor, I also want to thank several residents of Portside Villas who were very assistive to code enforcement's request to help them find evidence. They met with them out there, they showed them the evidence they were referring to. Very helpful people. Thank you for helping us with our investigation.
Thank you. Susan Chimi? Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Chimi.
Chimi. Hi, Susan. Thank you.
Good evening. I come just to say that since we moved here seven years ago, we had a beautiful background from our porch, and now all I see is those huge piles of dirt, I don't know what it is, or gray sand. And my tenant that lives in the next building, he's complaining all the time that he can't keep his bike and his surfboard outside because it's always dirty, and he can't use the patio to have coffee or dinner there because it's always dirty. So, I, I'm afraid that he might be moving out because of this, because he's been complaining for months. And also, these people, they work all through the night. I'm a, I don't go to bed early, and so you can hear the, the noises, and then the trucks that go back, pee, 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 up to four, five, six in the morning. It's nonstop. So, I don't know what we can do about that. I came, we came, with my husband, we came twice into City Hall and I spoke. I don't remember his name. I think he's a noise enforcement person, and he took all my information, and I never heard back from anybody, but this has been like six months ago, and nothing, I think it's getting worse, not better, or stays the same. So, I'd really like to see if they can resolve, you can resolve this going from now forward, you know, to what's going on there. So, that's what I like to talk about. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jean Durba?
Hi, I'm Jean Durba. I live at Portside Villa, but I've nicknamed it Dumpside Villa now. We have a problem, and everyone knows the problem. Problem is, first of all, it's our health. I'm not too sure what that, what the mound is even, we have, I think, someone else that's going to talk may know more about that than I do, but... I do, but I live, I'm one of the ones that, in the back, that see the view all the time. My porch, I can wipe it down and it's black, I mean, we're ingesting this. Now, many of the people, we're at Portside, we're not at the fancy fancy places, most of us are here because we worked hard all our lives and we now have a little money and we bought, we bought, most of us have either snowbirds or they bought and rented in hopes that when they live there full-time. And it's not, it's not what we wanted, I mean, it's, I'm embarrassed to have people come and see me. It's, this, it's beyond what anyone would ever consider, even, my thing is, I'm 78 years old, my experience has been, once a bad neighbor, always a bad neighbor. I have a feeling that this, we're gonna, our decision's gonna be, we have to sell or we're going to be seeing you and us and confiding for the rest of my life that I stay here, because I don't see them doing anything at all to even be a good neighbor at all. We're very, most of us could compromise, we're not, we understand that there has to be something on the other side, it's not our land, but I, what's going on now, besides the view and the health, we have a real estate problem, because if I went to sell my condo now, I know I'd lose at least $50,000. Nobody would buy my condo now, unless they were blind. I mean, because it's, you just can't live here the way it is now. I mean, I'm asking that somehow, we're gonna need a lot of help. I actually think what's going to happen is, and I don't know, because we really don't know what their plans are, but the, beside our pool, there's a fence and then that land is all being cleared too. I think they're gonna put a road probably there so they don't have to go into the port, they can go right, right there, if that dirt goes into a hot tub, our dirt's gonna go into the pool, I mean, when does it stop? So, you know, and, but it's a couple hundred people living there, it's a residential area. I don't understand what all this is, why it's all happening and what the zoning laws is, we don't really, we don't know really what's going on because we don't get a lot of information from them, and we're learning all the time, but we do know that they're not complying and I don't think they really care about the people living next to them. We have trailers on the other side, they're wonderful, we have no problem at all, we're not, we're not being snobby and saying we can't have this on this side or this on this side, what we're doing is trying to just breathe, you know, keep our real estate value going and to live without, without all the complaints and having people come to my house and not be embarrassed. And, and so that's, that's really what I have, what mostly I have to say, but it is a concern about the health because a lot of us are older now.
Thank you, Mr. Durba.
And I'm hoping that maybe together we can figure out what we can do.
Thank you.
Thanks for allowing me to speak. My wife and I live at Portside Villas and my concern today is the dirt piles or whatever you want to call them in the back end of the complex. Before we left up north to celebrate holidays with our family, I wiped down, we have a table on our lanai, I cleaned it off, cleaned the seats, everything, when we came back, I brushed it off with a dry rag and this is what we got. Now, my concern is a health concern. I don't know what they're making there, what they do with all this stuff, but if any of the products there are to make concrete, one of the main ingredients of concrete is silica, and silica dust is a carcinogen. They use 20 to 40% of the silica for the concrete mix because it strengthens it. Now, the silica dust shouldn't be flying to our area because when they have these conveyor belts, at the top of the conveyor belt is a fire hose, and I think it's just there for decoration because no water ever comes out on it. It's supposed to be spraying the particles as they're going into the pile to keep the dust down, and I'd like to see them enforce that, and I'd also like to have somebody test it to find out if any of this stuff is a carcinogen, because the big problem is if anybody ends up with a lung condition, ends up with lung cancer and they can pinpoint it back to there, there's gonna be massive lawsuits with both the town and the construction company. So I don't know, do you want this copy or, do you want this?
I particularly do not want it, but you're more than welcome to leave it here with our office or if you'd like to submit it and we can take a close look at it. Yes, thank you.
I'd like to have somebody check to see if it's, you know, any kind of carcinogens are there.
I think our city manager coordinating with the HOA and I think all the members through, to not only go over the codes, but on the next site visit, I don't know the level of testing that we can go within our code, but I'm sure can at least-
But I'd like to see them enforce the use of the hose to keep the dust down, I think that would help. And the thing is, they have to do it periodically because when it dries out, as soon as we get a big wind, you can see it just lapping right off the top.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zabrowski, appreciate your time.
Thanks for your time.
Right. Thank you. The next two are related to agenda item nine and four, those speakers, would you like to speak now? If so, the two cards, Tom and Jenna?
Hold on.
Okay. Ms. Jenna, is it poor?
David, when we get to nine?
Absolutely, thank you very much. Okay, that concludes the cards that I have here, if you filled one out or intended to speak, please raise your hand, let me know, we'll make sure you're heard, and for those of you listening at home, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and we will be able to unmute you and hopefully hear you at this time, I don't see any hands raised. Give it a second. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public participation portion of the meeting, bring it back to the consent agenda. City council, we have three consent agenda items, would we like to remove any? If not, you can look for a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'd like to pull number three for some questions.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum would like to remove item number three from the consent agenda, which leaves items one and two.
Make a motion to adopt consent agenda items one and two.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, a second by Councilmember Davis to approve agenda items one and two. Any further discussion? City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes 5-0. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, item number three.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just had a few things I wanted to discuss with the council, my concerns for this study. To me, you know, I looked it over and, you know, $7,500 is not a lot of money, but it, but it's money, and I think that we have, I have to look over some few things and answer, staff to answer some questions for me. It says in this, in the summary that the, that Kimley and Horn is going to look at the Mead and Hunt study that they did for the stormwater basin when we had the storms and we spent the money for that. My question is, if they're gonna use the data from the Mead and Hunt study, why didn't we just have Mead and Hunt do the feasibility for the section of property that's gonna be this civic hub? In, in the maps that I looked at in this, it looks like the study that was done by Mead and Hunt is the streets close to where the civic hub, where we're looking, Taylor and Fillmore. I think, you know, why are we going back to, nothing against Kimley and Horn, but, you know, if we paid 48, $46,000 for this study already in those streets that are nearby, why are we paying another $7,500 for them to comment on what the, the Mead and Hunt study said? I think that we have a capable staff, we have Zach and Lexie, and I'm wondering maybe if they use the Mead and Hunt study that, that Kimley and Horn's gonna use, why they could not meet with the St. John's Water Basin people themselves and maybe work this out. I just think that, you know, and then the other thing is, looking down the road to the Presidential Streets Master Plan that are going to address infrastructure, stormwater, all that, when it comes down to, yes, we want a civic hub, but do we need to tear up what we have to put filtration in when we're gonna start with the roads? If we started with Fillmore and Taylor on each side of the civic hub property, wouldn't that take care of the stormwater? Stormwater is a very important thing in our city and back at the strategic plan, planning meeting, we said, you know, ARPA money, we wanted to spend that money that we got on the stormwater problems and the flooding problems. So, and that's another question I have, this is gonna be funded, this study, out of the CRA money, if it's related to stormwater, why can't we use ARPA money? So these are just the questions I had about this, you know, it's the flat rate of $7,500 and then it says other expenses will be added to the cost. I just, you know, I think the Mead and Hunt stormwater report was very, you know, comprehensive and there is conceptual design projects in the plan, a lot of them we haven't addressed into fixing the stormwater problem. And, you know, again, when we look down the road at the Presidential Streets Master Plan and the Civic Hub, both have a huge price ticket on them, and are we spending the money right? Do we need that study? Can we get Mead and Hunt to do it? These are just concerns I had and I wanted to discuss with the council. So, that's where I am.
Thank you. The few questions in there, just take it one at a time, the, so the sufficiency of the Mead and Hunt study mixed with staff working in, I think that was the first thing, is do we need to, can we work off the existing study we've already invested in?
Well, Kimley and Horn is gonna use the study and then meet with St. John's Water. Why can't we, you know, we have, Zach is brilliant, Lexie's brilliant, why can't we, if they're using the data, why can't our staff use it and meet with St. John's, you know, water? Where you see, when you look at the contract for Kimley and Horn, it says right in there that using the Center Street basin provided by Hunt and Mead, and for them to do a summary, well, Hunt and Mead did a summary and had a lot of reasons, a lot of things in their summary to, for us to do, which is hopefully part of the Presidential Streets Master Plan, to fix the infrastructure, to add pavers and trees and things like that, so, you know, and it says a kickoff meeting with the city of Cape Canaveral and then one meeting with the St. John's River Management District to discuss design criteria, don't, you know, can our staff do that?
That first one, actually, if we can come back to it, as far as how it's funded was another question you had asked, I would call that the second one. CRA opposed to ARPA, city manager, can you help with that?
The Civic Hub project was always identified as a CRA-funded item. The council never expressed interest before today about funding it in any other way, but if there's a desire to, to look at funding it another way, we can certainly look at that.
Well, I just think, you know, the CRA money's gonna fund the Civic Hub project, that the stormwater part of it maybe needed to be funded by ARPA, you know, that's what we had decided when we got the ARPA funds, to spend the money on stormwater-related problems in the city, so, just a suggestion.
Okay, it sounds like if we needed to go that route, we would. Now, this is 7,500, can we go to page, it was provided in the agenda packet, attachment one, it's the next page, I think this is the second attachment, it shows the opinion Attachment to the October 24, 2023 city workshop minutes, excuse me, yes, right there. So the 7,500, where is that in here? I would assume it's a portion of one of these line items, is it the potable or stormwater?
This, this is a, Tim, correct me if I'm getting anything wrong, but this is construction costs, not design costs. So the $7,500 would be coming out of design anyways, you have to have a design approved, of course, before you can be, even put the project out for bid. Currently in the CRA, there's $150,000 for this line item, and explained in the agenda cover that although that $150,000 was initially slated for some selective demolition on the site, we've talked about it since and I've talked about it with council individually that we feel like that money could be better used to put towards the design of the first phase of the Civic Hub, which is the stormwater component of it. And this $7,500 is for a feasibility study, which would make sure we're getting the bang for our buck before we spend big money on a design. In essence, the $7,500 is gonna be coming out of the cost of what would be the engineered design document anyways. So, you would be doing that work then, we're just getting an early look at it now, in other words, we're getting a peek to see, is this really gonna be worth our bang for our buck before we spend a lot of money on a design? And to the question about who could or should do this task, the reason you want Kimley Horn to do it and not Mead and Hunt is because Kimley Horn is the intended design engineer for the project, so them doing the early work makes more sense than somebody else doing the early work and them having to accept it or maybe potentially have comments and problems with that early work. It's all being done by the same company that would do the full design and they theoretically shouldn't have any problems or comments with their own work. It just makes sense to have the person that's gonna do the design do this early task so we don't have a finger pointing thing later.
Okay, thank you, and so...
John, did you have a comment on the cost?
Mayor, just to add a little clarification too for the council, because this could get a bit confusing, but when Mayor Pro Tim Kellum's talking about ARPA money, the thing with the Civic Hub is gonna be funded in three ways, right? We have to read the loan funding, which is remaining for this year, then in the years to come, CRA funding and ARPA funding. So, Mayor Pro Tim, you're absolutely correct, now, the ARPA funding is gonna cover the stormwater, but of course, this year, it's the timing of what's happening that could confuse things when you wanna say, well, I thought that the ARPA was gonna be covered, or the stormwater was gonna be covered by ARPA, anything that had to do with that or the stormwater study, whatever. And it's just the timing and unfortunately, the first year, we have $150,000, like the city manager said, for whatever really occurs this year, and if it comes up that it's something like this, this study and it's geared towards stormwater, well, it's being funded by the remaining loan money, and then as we move forward next year, you know, we're gonna, and we're doing actual stormwater stuff, it's gonna be covered by ARPA and- And whatever else is going to be done then, whether it be development, whatever, is going to be CRA funding. So it does get a little confusing. Does everybody see with the timing, we're talking stormwater, but we're in the first year and it's being covered by that $150,000 with the loan money? And I hope that provides just a little bit, because ARPA doesn't play in in the first year. But ARPA does play in going forward for all our stormwater projects where we could use it. So I hope that helps with some clarity there. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. City manager, anything else?
Thank you, John, for the clarification.
So Mayor Pro Tem Kellum, I think he clarified at the beginning that, excuse me, the Mead and Hunt study, working internally, avoiding the 7,500. The feasibility, what happens if this comes out unfeasible? Or how do we, how are we defining feasible?
I think that's a great question. So if we are able to get out of this, a solid, yes, it's going to work, or a solid, no, it's not going to work, that's valuable for us. We'll have to rely on how much it's going to work, an opinion from the engineer about, well, is this enough to make it worth the expense of redirecting stormwater over here? I'm hopeful that that is the case. They're hopeful that that is the case. When we look at the geography of the basin and how things are upstream of it, it makes sense that that will likely be the case. But it's a real possibility that it might come back and they'll say, well, it's just, it's not as good a bang as a buck as we were hoping for. If that happens, then we need to reassess our whole situation with that stormwater project. I don't think that's going to happen, though. We don't know, we don't know, we're getting, we're paying to get a look.
Okay. The... So we don't have a number of gallons or a proximity of a million gallons or something we're trying to offset from off-site? You know, what's too low? Of course, anything I would assume we do to increase capacity for stormwater is going to help. Like I've said in the past, if I put a five-gallon bucket outside, that's going to help. But in this case, I think Mayor Pro Tem Kellum's thought, it does resonate with me in respect to the Mead and Hunt study. Those priorities were clear on how to fix the flooding on the south side of the city around the Center Street Basin. When the opportunity came to procure this property next door, which was the Promenade, and then it expanded into the Civic Hub, and then the concept of taking advantage of publicly owned property and trying to improve stormwater, whether it be underground, street closures under the streets, I think that's all fantastic. What I don't want to do is move, well, $7,500 as a small percentage to the total project cost is move in a direction that's a lower priority than what Mead and Hunt had. Or, you know, we end up going over budget in those areas that are closer to the problem. I think the timing of when we develop or if we choose however this turns out to move forward with the Civic Hub is really important because moving forward with stormwater on any property is good. However, if the Civic Hub isn't a project that we are going to get done in the next couple of years to take the time and to expand stormwater when we could be fulfilling that plan laid out by Mead and Hunt or expanding in other areas would be of interest. And so this is, to me, if we did a scenario, the best-case scenario, it's great. We're going to save, and I agree, more than what we're doing today. We're going to increase capacity. Well, then what? What is the next step of this project? Are we then breaking ground and moving forward with?
What I would propose is if we get this study approved by the council tonight, we would probably get a report back within 30 days of the notice to proceed. Probably, we wouldn't have anything back to council before the March meeting. But at that March meeting, we would have that answer. What's the bang for the buck? And we would also have, Kim Lee Horn would then submit the final conceptual plans as they promised to do. The next thing to do, in my opinion, at that point, would be, if we're getting the bang for the buck that we think we're going to get out of stormwater, is go ahead and ask them for a task order to do the design for the stormwater and use the remaining money that we have in this year's budget out of that $150,000 to fund that stormwater design. And that's all we get done on the Civic Hub this year. I think that would be good forward progress.
And Kim Lee Horn would do the design?
Yes, sir.
Have, and they've, have they provided a quote?
Not yet. That quote will be informed by this $7,500 study.
Have they? We've set a budget for $150,000. And do we have the, is that, is that a good?
I feel...
How is that number, I guess? Was that an educated estimate that was?
No, as John said, that was the remainder of the proceeds of the loan. It's just what was left. And thank you for that clarification. It had no intention to be used for design funds when the council approved the budget. It was just put in there with the, I remember the discussion was targeted demolition or specific demolition. But as I mentioned earlier, we think that a better expenditure of that, a better use of that money would be to actually further the design, especially if this, as you say, is going to be a multi-year project. We don't really have to remove things, demolish things right now. They can still stay there if they're serviceable, they can stay there. It makes more sense, in my opinion, to move forward with the design if it makes sense after this study.
I think knowing, we received a quote for a feasibility of 7,500. So we're essentially, that will inform the cost of the design. So we have to invest 7,500 to get, I guess, an estimate would be helpful to me on a project of this size, because I don't want sticker shock, you know, when we...
Kim Lee Horn has assured me that we'll be able to get what we need to get done under $150,000.
And the 7,500 comes out of the $150,000?
Whatever the design fee is.
And so that design is just for stormwater or for the entire?
No. The stormwater is, we've broken the project into two phases. Phase one is the stormwater phase. And phase two is the, what I call the vertical construction, everything that's above the ground. The stormwater is beneath the ground, that's phase one. So there's a separate task in construction. Remember, this is a multi-year project. So it's probably a year's worth of work just to do the stormwater work after the design is done. We're probably into 2025, 26, before we even talk about the vertical construction, engineered documents, plans, and then construction after that. So we're still out four years or more on this, at least, in my opinion.
Okay. Yeah, because I'm looking here at the phase one, as you referenced, and it talks on that same attachment to the minutes workshop that we were looking earlier. $5.7 million for infrastructure and park enhancements? Is that the? Stormwater is 2.6 million? Underground stormwater systems, food truck area, Taylor Avenue, event lawn. I guess I'm pickleball courts. This sounds like the cost is for more than just stormwater. If $150,000 is sufficient for the design, the cost of, to make those improvements, is there a place on this page we can go? Is it the stormwater line item for the actual? Or I guess the budget? I know, I know you've said a couple of times, we don't know that number. But I guess what do we have budgeted? Is that the 2.6 million?
Tim, are you able to answer that? I'm not sure I can answer that question the way it's being phrased. He's referring to this opinion of probable cost document on the screen and asking essentially, I believe, where is the $7,500 coming out of which one of these items?
Well, I think that was part of it, and you helped answer that. I guess after the 7,500 is paid for the feasibility study, they provide us a recommendation on cost-effective or not, to do what? And we have 140,000, I guess, left over to do the design for stormwater?
Yes.
In this budget, where are the actual physical construction costs for stormwater that we have budgeted here?
Then would that be the 2.6, I think that says? It's kind of fuzzy. That font is hard to read. There at 2.6.
Yes.
Remember, this is, this is an estimate to build to a total topmost dollar amount. And it seems like to me that's, that's where the design or the construction cost for stormwater would come out of that.
My mic.
You got to push it and wait, wait a second.
Yeah, these are, yeah, this is a whole probable cost sheet. And, I mean, this is just that probable. Because our budget, you know, only goes out to 24, 25 on what we, you know, we anticipate could happen in 24, 25. This picture is probable of what may be in, who knows, the next four, four years or whatever, if all the things on this sheet were to take place. So, this was given to you by, is this, is this a Kim Lee Horn probable cost? So this is Kim Lee Horn, mayor, saying, if you look at this list entirely, these are the probable costs as they see it now to give you what's on this sheet. Is this what would be actual, actually happen for the future? I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
No, I think it's an opinion of probable construction cost. I'm asking which, I'm not, I see the whole sheet. Which portion is stormwater? It seems pretty clear, 2.6 million dollars.
It looks like 2.6 on here.
Is that, and so...
But it doesn't specify design, I think is what your question is.
If I may, mayor?
Yes, please.
I believe that what it's saying, now that I'm reading again, it's saying that underground stormwater systems, as in underground stormwater systems under the food truck area, under Taylor Avenue, under the event lawn, under tennis courts, under the pickleball courts, northeast parking lot and east parking lot. And it's estimated at 2.6 million dollars if they do all those areas.
But it doesn't say whether that includes design fees.
Correct.
And I think that's the question he's trying to get at.
I'm, the 7,500, no, what I, so we invest 7,500 for feasibility. We then invest 150,000, no matter where it comes from, for design to say, as you said, is it cost-effective? Well, if the cost is projected to be 2.6 million dollars, when we go back to the decision tonight to make on a $7,500 feasibility study, I think that a couple million, two to three million dollars to the gallons of water that will be redirected is how I would do a rough estimate. So if we save 2.6 million gallons of water, we're doing, for 2.6 million dollars, it was a dollar a gallon. And so when I said I share concern, I do want to kind of see more of the, where we're headed as far as costs. And that's a, that's a big investment for stormwater capacity. And they came up with that 2.6 million based on some sort of cubic feet, I would imagine, in construction cost. And so it's hard to say, you know, yes, emphatically over this. As Mayor Pro Tem Kellum, when we did, and we have the Mead and Hunt studies, we know that it will improve stormwater. But if the end of the road is looking to be a couple million dollars, I don't want to see us, you know, improve north of the area where the flooding is serious. Johnson, Fillmore Avenue, Tyler, or I'm sorry, Lincoln Buchanan. You know? And the last, the GIS data that I think we, did we determine who, we have the GIS data that shows the flow of that? And did we, from who provided that data to us?
You referring to Mead and Hunt data, Tim?
Yeah, so when Mead and Hunt did their study, they did their study and then they gave us options in mind of what we could do for the Center Street Basin. We picked to put a pump at the end of the street, which we're getting ready to start that project. Mead and Hunt also gave other possibilities of what we could do within the Center Street Basin. And as one of them, they said to look for any probable places to put underground storage. And they named quite a few things. So we actually saved quite a bit of money by handing that Mead and Hunt study, which has like, I don't know, 40 pages of nothing but numbers on it, over to Kim Lee Horn to be able to use those numbers, because there's a whole scientific equation behind it that we can't do here for them to do. And then they will be able to take that data for $7,500 and pull that data and say, okay, this is how much water is running within this whole basin. This is how much we can put underground over in this area. Is it worth it to put 100,000 gallons under here for $1 million? Or is this like, kind of like what the city manager said, is it the best bang for our buck? And that's, after the study, that's where we find out, okay, where are we going with this? You know, and then comes, if we decide to go forward with it after that study is done, then we decide, okay, let's go ahead and have them draw plans for the underground storage system. I think this is going to be worth it.
It supports intelligent, quantifiable decision-making down the road.
I have another question for Tim. The Mead and Hunt study and all the conceptual designs for ways to improve stormwater in our city, are we using that for the Presidential Streets Master Plan? The $46,000 that we spent on that study?
I can speak to that probably better than Tim can. Because he wasn't in our meeting today when we, staff talked about the next steps on Presidential Streets Master Plan. Staff will be gathering, getting together with Kim Lee Horn on that as well. And we will be directing them to seek out opportunities within each roadway to store stormwater as we do them in an engineered plug-and-play way. And for example, this is a scenario, I'm not an engineer, but this is a scenario I can imagine. Every intersection, as it's getting done, when it was, let's say we were doing a street or two streets, every intersection could theoretically be, I don't know, 40,000 gallons of stormwater storage. Also, every intersection could be a speed table, right? To keep the traffic slow. And you plug those in and then you could know, well, do we need that on this street? Yeah, we do. Do we need three of them on the street? Yeah, we probably should do, or two's enough or whatever. So that opportunity-based thing is exactly what the Mead and Hunt study said to do within the basin where you can. Presidential Streets Plan will absolutely take that into every one of the design projects that we do in the Presidential Streets.
And my other question is, so we decide to do the 7,500 and we get the study. And then down the road, when we get to the plans and the cost, we decide, well, we can't do this and the Presidential Master Plan. And like you're saying, the streets are going to have their own stormwater holding places. Do we need that under the pickleball courts and under, will we need that if we're doing it on every road? I'm just saying, you know, once we get the design of the Presidential Master Plan, street plan and the Civic Hub, the price tag is going to be enormous. And, you know, I just, we're going to have to cut this out or cut that out to be able to afford everything. I'm just wondering, do we actually need? I'm just wondering, do we actually need these things under the civic hub? If we're doing the other roads, we just did Veterans Park with the pond. I mean, do we need all that?
It's important to keep in mind the way that the basin is structured, that there are flows from, say, this block flows here, or these two blocks flow here. But these other blocks down here do not. You have an opportunity in these blocks to catch it in the civic hub, or you don't have that opportunity over here. So this is a place in this basin where we might be able to hopefully design a super holding tank underneath the civic hub that we don't have anywhere else. We don't have this super holding tank size property anywhere else in the Presidential Streets area.
Well, like the mayor said, if we get 2,600,000 gallons of water for that kind of money, then, okay. That's all I have. I didn't know if anybody else wanted to comment on it, the council.
And Mayor Pro Tim, your questions here are very justified in the sense of where we were a year ago. Because when we talked about what were the stormwater needs and council, when we did the budget, had decided that, you know, really we were talking about just under the parking lot, okay? And we put 500K in there and council, you know, we gave council that. And now, Mayor, when you look at this opinion of probable cost and you see 2.6 million, it's a very good question as to now, we went from the parking lot, under the whole complex. And of course, the city manager just said, this is where you could have this vast whatever that might be needed to, I guess, service, you know, a lot of the city, a lot of like, you know, the roads to the, the roads to the south and what have you, those streets you were concerned about. But that's, this is, I'm just pointing out, this is how we evolved. We talked a year ago about 500K for a stormwater system underneath the parking lot. And now here's where we went with an opinion on this probable cost.
And I also want to point out in our meeting today, and Zach brought up the point, that the construction of this could also be offset by sorrel funds, say, our Indian River Lagoon Fund, if we can demonstrate how we're taking nitrogen and phosphorus out of the lagoon. So we might very strategically find ways perhaps also to see if there's a component where we can redirect some overages of reclaimed water into this, like we do at the ball field. Just to get, just to qualify for grant funding.
Thank you. Council, any other comments?
My thoughts are, we should just go ahead and do it. Because we have to look down the road into the future. So we may say we don't need it now, but then we're going to find out we do need it, or, you know, for the flooding, and it's going to cost us more. So it's better to do it all at once than do it separate. Because my understanding, it would cost more to do it separately, right? So as we're doing it all, we might as well do it all. Because that's going to be more cost effective as well. So I think we need to look at the future and see, you know, we may not think we need it now, but what do we need down the road?
Thank you. Member Willis?
Well, I think we need to also bear in mind that anything we remove upstream lessens the flooding downstream. And the city, we have to plan for the future. I mean, the city hasn't always flooded. When there were fewer homes here, it didn't flood as bad. But it has evolved to it. And we don't know what is coming our way in the future. So I think we have to plan in any way we can. And if this study, the study could tell us exactly how much we really need to put, or is feasible to put under the civic hub. It may not be all of it. It may be a third of it. But if it relieves the pressure downstream, then that will immediately help relieve some of the flooding. Because what falls on Lincoln is not the only reason it floods. That water is being kept from going into the drainage because of what's upstream coming through. So we have to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson, any comments?
Well, I wasn't involved with the Mead Hunt report, as you all know. But I'm really questioning the fact that we're at this at this point and looking at a feasibility, a feasibility study with the amount of detailed information that was in the Mead Hunt report. Because it's very detailed in what alternatives we have. And there is definite reference to whether this will even work or not in the wordage. Let me see. In the city council minutes for the 24th, you know, about, you know, over design of the system and whether this is even going to be feasible. So I have a, I'm having a gap, I will say that, let's put it that way. I have a gap because how could this report from Mead Hunt be so detailed that we're needing a feasibility study at this point? I guess that's.
Mayor, I can help with that if you'd like, sir. The Mead and Hunt study gathered all the applicable data. So you've got the size of pipes, what direction they flow, the inlets, the manholes, the access points, the flow rates, the historical things, and the age of the infrastructure. So you've got a, an inventory is what it is, an inventory of engineering data. What Kimley Horn is proposing to do is take a portion of that data and make a scenario. If we did this, what's the benefit? Then make another scenario with a different portion of data and make scenario B, and perhaps scenario C and D, or combinations of scenarios. And then with those, they'll come forward with the result of the 7,500 expenditure would be them saying, we looked at these scenarios, and this is the best one, and this is what you would get if you did this. Combination of these areas of using this data. So it's manipulating the data much like a spreadsheet to get to a point where you could say, well, that's a good path forward.
And did the Mead Hunt report not give us, it gave us alternatives for these different things?
Yes, for the entire basin. It wasn't for a portion of an upstream portion of the basin, like what, this is what this is.
Okay, and then another section I had seen, I have to find where that is. We discussed about the height of the central basin and whether that will even work as far as routing the water here.
I'm sorry, the central basin?
Well, I'm wanting to find my note here. Center Street basin, so it's the lowest point, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
The Center Street basin, the lowest point.
I would say the Center Street basin is the most troubled basin in our city. Because not only of its elevation, but because of the built environment and so much of the impervious space is running directly into that.
Okay, and so with that, it is lower elevation, I'm taking it. Am I correct on that?
Tim, do you know if it's one of the lower basins of all of our basins?
I believe most of the outfalls are 90, 80, 90% underwater. So they're all heading out about the same height.
Okay, and in comparison to the civic hub project? Because when I had read through this before, there were questions on whether we could even do to, I mean, come on, gravity, I think it even said in the report, I want to make sure I'm not missing that. Whether we'd be able to route it to the civic hub area anyway?
That would be part of the feasibility study.
Okay.
They have to make sure that they can get the drop.
So we really don't have an answer for that through the Mead Hunt report?
Right.
Okay, and what, those were my questions.
Thank you, the good questions, thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I think that was it, is that Mead and Hunt did the entire basin, which is what we wanted. And it allowed us to prioritize. And I think when we talk about the different scenarios, we're talking about, they're going to do a study on different scenarios on this one property.
To get stormwater to this one property.
And what I am feeling and saying is that, why are we not looking at different scenarios in other parts of the city? And I think that's what we were talking about.
Presidential Streets.
Or just, they gave these sub-basin, these focused areas, and they showed where the flooding is. In cost effective, if we determine it's cost effective compared to what? Or if we're not comparing it to another project that Mead and Hunt recommended, is, yes, it's going to offset this amount. But if there's public street intersections today that can be excavated and underground vaults are raised, and that results in reducing flooding on those streets, I don't think we would need to wait for the Presidential Streets Master Plan to unfold, to dig up an intersection and fix the flooding. But if we're 2.1 to 2 million dollars in over here on this north part of the basin, when we could have gotten a higher impact down there, that's what, that's where I'm wrestling with the priorities. We basically are taking one site that we own and have access to and saying, you know, a sensitivity analysis of, you know, if we did this, how much would it impact? And finding the best scenario within that property. But it's a big, it's a big land, or a piece of, the basin's very large. And so that was it. And 7,500 in the grand scheme for this is not a lot. But it's 7,500 that it'd be good to compare to some other sites within the seven recommended or considerations. And I know, Tim, you went over, expanding the pipes is a big part of it. And so that's the one thing I never understood was how we can prioritize these. And we jump to, hey, well, we got this property, let's see what this impact would be. Does that make sense? Instead of saying, does, where does, knowing the impact on the one property compared to what, do we have the other options or things that we can look at? And if that's what Kimley Horn wanted to look at, great. And I do understand, Mead and Hunt got in the trenches with these numbers and they know them. Can they come back when they said, consider any options? Why aren't we going to Mead and Hunt and saying, yeah, can you run within your model this scenario? Expanding the pipes at Orange and Buchanan, or Fillmore and Orange, wherever.
So if I'm.
That's my last statement.
That was my whole thing.
Hard to put that together, but yeah.
With this comprehensive study from Mead and Hunt, why can't we just go to them and say, okay, this is, we got this piece of land, this is what we want to do? How, you know, and I understand that Kimley Horn is going to do the design, but they're taking the data from Mead and Hunt now. Couldn't they take that data and do the design once it's done? I don't even know if it would cost more maybe for Mead and Hunt. But I just didn't understand why we take a study that we paid 46,000 for and not, you know, try to use it as much as we could.
I understand what you're saying. And, you know, theoretically, they've both got talented engineers, both firms very capable of doing the task. My thinking is, if we have a company, Kimley Horn, already identified as the engineer of record on this project, who's going to be doing this engineering, I'd rather them do the feasibility study so they will absolutely accept that feasibility study as opposed to, say, Mead and Hunt doing a feasibility study and then asking them to accept that study from a different firm.
But they're accepting the Mead and Hunt data.
Yes.
To do this, so why wouldn't I, they not accept?
It's a different work product.
Just seeing the stormwater project sites in the whole basin with gallons of water, which, and then cost, is really the visual thing that we, I think, would help us make a good decision. And if the civic hub is number one, we do need to do it first. We don't want to, and we should do all of them, in my opinion, over time, as we can afford and as the citizens believe its importance. So that was it.
And I have one statement, and that is, we should be looking at what would be more expedient to be completed first. Because relief needs to be found for this. And I know that we have the tidal valve going in, so hopefully that will help tremendously. But these projects that go out four or five years, there's going to be people that want to build on this island, and we're going to be adding more concrete to this place. And that we have to consider as well as the council.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, thank you for pulling this. I did, obviously, had some questions too.
I have a question.
Councilmember Davis?
Todd, if Mead and Hunt, are they going to charge us if they want to, if they're going to start looking at the civic hub, are they going to charge us to do a survey, you know, to look at that as far as how it will connect with theirs? Or, I mean, somehow we have to get this property looked at and see how much we can or how much it needs or it doesn't need for flood. You know, we agree, we all agree, it has to be, we have to consider the flooding as a problem with the city. So will Mead and Hunt charge us to do this as well, to look at this part of the property? So how do we know Mead and Hunt isn't going to be more expensive than Kimberly Horn, who is going to do all of it?
None of the engineers do anything for free.
I know, so it's still going to cost us either way, is my point. So if we have Kimberly Horn, who's in charge of the whole project, that would be my suggestion that they're comfortable with their decisions and their design instead of having to figure out somebody else's design or whatever, because we've had that problem at the water plant with designs and everything else. So if it's going to cost us, I think we should go with the developer that's doing the project. And that they're comfortable with what they do, what they decide to do. So that's just, it's going to cost us either way. So it's not like it's going to cost us 7,500 for Kimberly Horn and nothing for Mead and Hunt. Mead and Hunt might be more. So that's just a thought as well. It's, either way, it's going to cost you.
If you decide to go with the 2.6 million and do all this stuff underneath, you know, obviously, that has to be done before any development takes place, right? If you decided to do other areas first and say, you know, we're not going to do the 2.6 million, maybe we'll just do the 500K under the parking lot or whatever. It's almost impossible to develop the civic hub unless council just says, you know what? We're not going to do the stormwater, the other parts of the, under the other parts of the civic hub, we're just going to do this one area. Because once you start, if you decide to develop that area and not do the 2.6, it's very hard to come back. You will be actually, that will cost the city a fortune in tearing up what we've, you know, what we've already developed. So the decision's going to be with council, it is a challenging decision. But to go with the 2.6 and do it so the continuation of the civic hub development could take place. Otherwise, this could become a four, five, six year or longer project. So it's a challenging decision. But is, do we get what we want for the 2.6 for all this stormwater work? And I think that's what you got to look at.
You make the design based on what the feasibility study says is the best case scenario. And that will inform the cost.
That cost could be 1.2 million.
Could be, yeah.
Right.
Or it could be only 500,000 because we're not going to get the bang for the buck that we wanted. You know, these are, this is intelligence we're buying here.
I think looking at the property and knowing what's possible with stormwater is a good exercise. The 7,500 was not, obviously, every dollar matters. But I guess this is a good indicator of the costs. You know, if we start to look at other properties too. And so, I mean, we've already done under the ball fields, that was a different scenario. But if we want to, I just wanted to go through down the road. Can we have Mead and Hunt, would they be willing to come to the next meeting? And even Kimley Horn, or definitely Mead and Hunt, to go back through their facilities, plan, just a brief presentation to make sure that we're understanding this? Because I remember at the time, we moved through that pretty quick.
They will do, in their continuing services agreement with the city, both firms have hourly fees. We can ask them to do things and they'll just charge us on an hourly basis. So yes, they can come back, we'll pay them for it to do it, whatever time they spend here. But we'd want to be very clear on what information we're asking them to present on.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
Well, I, you know, I definitely think the feasibility study is definitely needed to move forward. My only concern was this comprehensive plan by Meaden Hunt and all these different scenarios on how we can fix this stormwater flooding in our city is followed somewhere along the line. You know, the conceptual plans they have and the ideas, maybe it will fall into the Presidential Master Plan, but if we use what they told us we need to do to fix things, that's what's important to me.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, if there's not anything else, I think I'm okay with that moving forward with it, looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve item number three on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, a second by Councilmember Willis to approve consent agenda item number three. Any further discussion, debate? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay. Motion passes 5:00. We're just past 7:30. Like to propose taking a 10-minute recess, right? If that's counsel, okay? All right. Let's, let's come back at 7:42, around there, and we'll reconvene. Good. Thank you.
He's got to watch her words, you know?
I know. I know. I felt like a- All right, we'll get started here in just a minute. All but one or two. Hey, Andre, welcome back. How are you? You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. I called the meeting back to order at 7:45 PM. We are in our regular city council meeting here at City Hall. We just wrapped up the consent agenda, item number three, and now we'll be moving over to the public hearing portion of the meeting. The first public hearing, item number four, ordinance number 10-2023, City Attorney.
This is the adoption hearing, second reading, ordinance number 10-2023. This was previously postponed to this meeting from the December council meeting. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, amending the City of Cape Canaveral Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element by establishing a mixed-use, MXU, land use category and related objective and policies, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and effective date and legal status of the plan amendment. Again, this is an adoption hearing, also it's a public hearing. At the last city council meeting, there was discussion about Live Local, and the city manager asked me to put together a little presentation. I wasn't sure if you wanted that at the beginning of this agenda item, or would you like to hear it later?
Counsel, we want to hear that now? Prior? If that's okay with you?
Absolutely. Okay, so-
Is your microphone? Because I'm not-
Yes, it's on. So Live Local, there was discussion about Live Local and the possible implications of Live Local on the proposed mixed-use ordinance. So this, I have about six slides. I'll go through them rather quickly. Okay, so Live Local was adopted last session by the Florida Legislature. It's codified in Chapter 166, which is the Municipal Home Rule Powers Act. The purpose of Live Local is to promote the development of workforce and affordable housing statewide. So the regulation of local government zoning is only a small part of Live Local. The legislature's law that was passed was pretty and comprehensive. The main purpose included funding of approximately $1.5 billion in state funds over 10 years for affordable housing, also providing developers with tax exemptions for affordable housing projects, creating new ad valorem property tax incentives, providing down payment and closing assistance to first-time workforce homebuyers, and offering competitive first-time homebuyer mortgage rates. So you can see is the zoning aspect is just one small aspect of it, although an important aspect and an aspect that has caused many consternations for counties and cities. Next slide. Why? Because the provisions of the Live Local Act related to land use and zoning provide for a preemption of, of home rule authority. It allows qualifying developments in zoning districts where they would not otherwise be allowed. In other words, cities and counties have zoning districts that would prohibit a residential apartment complex. Live Local would brush those local regulations aside and make those affordable housing development apartment projects consistent with law and authorized. So that's, that's the crux. So the act allows multifamily and mixed-use developments in industrial, commercial, or mixed-use districts. The minimum of the 40, if you have a qualifying project, a minimum of 40% of the units must be affordable, as defined in the statute, for a minimum of 30 years. For mixed-use, six, for a mixed-use project, 65% of the total project square footage must be residential, and the remaining could be commercial. And the definition of affordable, just generally speaking, is 120% of AMI, which is the average median income. And of course, on the AMI statistics, you have the statistics for single households versus, you know, you know, families up to a certain point. So those statistics can be obtained from the state housing, the park agencies. So it's not, Live Local is not applicable, not applicable to residential districts. It's again, only applicable to industrial, commercial, or mixed-use districts. Next, next slide. Now, mixed-use is not defined in, in the act currently. It would encompass projects with multiple non-resident, residential uses. It's not clear whether mixed-use in the act includes mixed-use residential projects. It's not clear whether mixed-use in the act includes mixed-use residential projects. So there's room for the city to interpret and adopt its own definition of mixed-use. Many believe that the mixed-use zoning district where these projects are allowed are mixed-use districts that are limited to non-commercial, no, I'm sorry, non-residential uses. Again, because Live Local is intended to brush aside commercial and industrial zoning districts that only allow those types of uses and allow an affordable residential project to be developed in those other districts. There is an exception for certain cities. It's a limited exception. When a city designates less than 20% of the land area within its jurisdiction as commercial or industrial, the affordable housing projects required to be authorized by the Live Local Act have to be a mixed-use residential with a commercial component to it. It can't be a standalone residential. I don't believe, based on the math currently, that the city would fall under the less than 20% criteria under that exception. The act also requires the city to publish online inventory of surplus lands, which can be used for affordable housing projects if any such lands exist. Next slide. So the preemption, and here's really the serious crux of the matter. So the act limits the city's ability to regulate height and density of affordable projects, housing projects. The height that must be allowed for these types of projects include the highest allowed height for a commercial or residential development within one mile of the proposed development or three stories, whichever is higher. Now note that the Live Local Act refers to allowed height. I think the consensus on that is it has to be explicitly currently allowed in your regulations. It's not really intended to be like a non-conforming use or a non-conforming height situation. In addition, density is preempted. The city would have to allow the project to the highest density allowed on any land in the city where residential development is allowed. As you know, currently, the city's comprehensive plan, the allowed maximum density is 15 dwelling units per acre. There are some projects that were approved well before that 15 dwelling unit per acre limitation was imposed by comp plan that are vested. I don't believe those vested density projects would be used in a Live Local analysis, in my opinion. So other land development regulations may be enforced, even though there are the preambulations that I mentioned. So the city can still enforce its tree preservation setbacks and parking requirements. However, the Live Local Act encourages reduced parking requirements for affordable residential development projects. So the, this is a good one. The legislature preempted the city council and the governing board from conducting public hearings and approvals on Live Local projects. Affordable housing projects must be approved administratively. So no action of the council is allowed under the Live Local Act if the project is otherwise consistent with the comp plan and the city code. So the city can't require of Live Local affordable housing projects to obtain rezonings, comprehensive plan amendments, special exceptions, variances, or other public hearing approvals. So that is cannot require. So just to go back and summarize, so if you had an affordable housing, qualified affordable residential development project on the Live Local, those projects can be located in commercial areas, even though the city zoning code prohibits residential. Can be also constructed in industrial areas, even though the industrial zoning district prohibits residential projects. And mixed-use zoning districts, and there's an interpretation there. I think it's mixed-use commercial zoning districts. An affordable qualified residential project could locate there. So they are allowed as a permitted use in those zoning districts. And then the analysis is, well, what's the maximum height? And what's the maximum density? And Live Local preempts the maximum density and maximum height based on the formula. You know, the height is the one-mile rule, or three stories, whichever is higher. And then density is the maximum allowed in the city. So, you know, under the Live Local Act, there's no public notices required for the approval of those projects. So it essentially avoids public hearings and community local government participation in the development approval process for qualified Live Local affordable housing projects. The Live Local Act also prohibits the city from adopting rent control for these projects. On a brighter note, the incentives that are provided in the local expire October 1, 2033, unless extended by the legislature. So that's Live Local as it currently stands. So go to the next slide, I believe. What do you know? There's pending legislation that was filed recently to propose changes to the Live Local Act. It's pending Senate Bill 328 and House Bill 1239. What would the pending legislation as currently drafted do? Well, it would now preempt, if adopted, the city regulating floor area ratio for affordable housing. I'm not sure that's a big issue for Cape Canaveral on far regulations, but in some cities, that's a very, very big issue. It removes industrial developments or industrial zoning districts. It would only require administrative approval in commercial and mixed-use districts. So somewhere along the line, they're now contemplating removing industrial areas as a possible destination for these Live Local affordable housing projects. And then that would basically restore the local zoning pertaining to industrial. It would ratchet down the height preemption rather than one mile. The proposal is going to a quarter mile or three stories, whichever is higher. And then they're proposing an additional rule that if the proposed Live Local affordable housing project is adjacent, is adjacent to a property with height three stories or less, then the height restriction is 125% of the tallest building on the adjacent property or three stories, whichever is higher. So that, you know, ratchets down the current impact that some communities are experiencing. As you can imagine, they're wrestling with it in South Florida on a couple of projects, one in particular on the beach side. So you can imagine if you got a neighborhood of a certain geographical area and none of the buildings are, you know, any higher than maybe four or five stories, and then here comes this qualified Live Local affordable project, and then you, here's the area in question with the neighborhood, and now you're expanding out even further and drawing upon the tallest building, you know, one mile away, right? It's causing some constenation, for sure. So it also clarifies, which is basically how I interpret Live Local today, that it only pertains to currently allowed density and height. It doesn't include bonuses and variances. So that would be an improvement from the current situation. At least clarifies what most people, at least in my world, interpret Live Local to mean. I already talked about changing the height radius. And the last one is affordable housing development. If it's a Live Local affordable housing development project and it's approved, it'll be considered a conforming use, even after the expiration of the affordability period. So on the Live Local, if you qualify for the project, you build it. You're required to make it available for the 120% AMI, you know, for a period of 30 years. You know, there's a provision in the proposed legislation that, you know, if a project gets built and they violate that obligation, the conforming use that was approved through preemption then becomes non-conforming. Now, the project has already been built, but it goes from a conforming to a non-conforming use. That's basically the only, if this passes, it's really kind of the only sanction, so to speak. You know, but some communities, you know, that are dealing with affordable, these projects are imposing local covenants and, you know, that get put in place to maintain, you know, the rents pursuant to the requirements of the Live Local Act. So how those get enforced, I don't, you know, I don't know. But some communities are requiring, imposing that as an additional obligation to hold the project to the AMI requirements. So with respect to Live Local Act, the time to lobby is now because there's pending legislation, to the extent that people are concerned with Live Local and the impacts locally regarding Live Local. Now's the appropriate time to, you know, to contact your legislators on this issue because they are taking up new legislation this session. That's a summary of Live Local. Hope that helps. I'm not sure how that impacts the ordinance before you, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very. Thank you very much. Councilmember Jackson, thank you again for the last meeting. I believe you had asked about this, and that was helpful. And I certainly can see how this will make you pause. And so if there's any other questions and follow-up of that presentation, we are in the public hearing, item number four, ordinance number 10-2023. I guess that was served as a question to our city staff to help support. My general question is, does it impact? Well, there's a few, but just overall, the last slide you shared was what's being proposed today, and the one prior, or some of the preambitions and issues today. And I go back to, I think it was 2017, or 18, shortly after I was first elected. We took up the non-conforming density issue with condos and Canaveral Towers of the world. A lot of these were built in the 60s. It's your understanding and opinion that because we vested those, non-conforming, that those densities in the residential area would not, could, I mean, you could see them going the other way? It sounded like your opinion is that we have to honor, or we can't exceed what exists today that is conforming. I think you made it clear that it's not, does not apply to non-conforming. But when you went, I appreciate you going through that part and reminding because how do you think it'll treat vested Live Local? Because that could create, I don't know what the highest density. I remember seeing 40, 50 in there. Is that just enough? Guess what is the?
It was just based on whatever the existing number of units and acreage for those projects were. I mean, those were very, you know, old projects preceded the 15 dwelling unit per acre cap. So to address issues regarding the non-conforming status, the council addressed it by approving vested rights certificates for those specific condo projects. So those densities are no longer allowed in the city of Cape Canaveral. So the Live Local discusses allowed densities. And the way I interpret that is it's allowed under existing regulations. And vested rights certificates for those individual projects, you know, those are not allowed anywhere else but for that specific site. Now, you can see in the proposed legislation, they're actually clarifying, right? What I think was the intent of the language that's there today, that it's not intended to apply to those densities that have gotten a variance or, you know, a special exception or something like that. And that's how I consider the vested rights certificates. Those are very unique, partial-by-partial situations that are not, that are only authorized for those sites. So I don't think those densities would be considered allowed, in my opinion.
Thank you. Counsel? We will need to go to public, but just any questions now is helpful. Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
So I wanted to ask, does changing the units, the number of units per acre on our MXU or multi-use zoning, will that change it for the Live Local? Since currently we're set at 15 units per acre? And the recommendation was that, was that 30 units per acre or 35?
Up to.
Up to 35. So will that change that going forward for the Live Local projects if we had any that came to the city?
You know, my view on that is likely not. I mean, because, again, that, under the proposed mixed-use designation, there are, the only way to get this mixed-use designation is to have a specific project approved in conjunction with the, you know, getting the future land use map designation. And it's up to, there's a potential bonus of up to 30. But the allowed density is 15. And again, and I'm relying on proposed legislation, you know, those types of bonuses would not be considered allowed. But that's under the pending legislation. But that's my interpretation of the current Live Local Act.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I had another one, Wes. Mayor Morrison, I had another one in regards to current residential zones. We currently have some smaller units over on the, in the residential zone. Is it R? Help me with the zoning city.
R1, R2, R3.
Thank you. What is the smallest square footage of those units? I mean, one of the smallest, I think there were ones that are 500 square feet or 495.
Without looking at the zoning code, I believe the smallest category is 450 square feet. Dave, is that correct? Right.
And so my concern, one of my concerns with this in regards to the mixed-use is the fact that we'll have residential units in a commercial location, in a commercial-zoned location. So literally, we have no code, our code is silent, on rentals. And I'm afraid about people using this for short-term rentals in a commercial zone for these smaller units. There's a lot of people that live in smaller units closer to the beach because of the advantage of being close to the beach. Most of our properties that I've seen are closer to A1A. So I'm wondering what kind of situation we might be creating there. We are currently, with the last few meetings I've been in, we're currently working to clean up the non-conforming properties that have residential. that have residential properties that are zoned commercial and things like this. And I think this throws a little bit of a monkey wrench into that because of the fact that we have these properties that'll be on, that were zoned commercial. And we don't really have code telling them you can't do short-term rentals. So this makes me a little concerned and question whether that can become a possibility. Do we need to look at some of our ordinances to ensure that we have the correct code in there for zoning for those rental situations? Because we're working really hard to clean that up and I don't want to make that worse.
Thank you. All good points. And I think we can come back if needed. Is there any other comments before we go to public comment? And we'll come back and discuss. Good. Okay, this is a public hearing item number four. I did have a card or two on this. And for those of you who are listening at home, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and we'll recognize you. The first card I have here is Tom? Tom Hermanson, I didn't remember four. So when you said withdrawal earlier, you were, okay, understood. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'd just like to come up here and take a minute and voice my support. I think it's forward thinking for the council and staff to put such an ordinance forward. I speak often about the tools that the city has in order to engender additional development. And this is one of those tools and toolkit that's been missing in Cape Canaveral for a long time. Providing flexibility for property owners to consider new uses obviously will attract potentially more development, increase tax base and all the ensuing benefits. I have looked at the Live Local Act. You know, it was very interesting to hear Mr. Garganese's opinion as to its impact with respect to the mixed use zoning. One of the things I'd point out is the AMI, you know, affordable housing kind of has, you know, a lot of bad connotations. People immediately assume that it's low-income housing. But with the AMI in Brevard County, and I'm not exactly sure how they factor it in. It's 120%, and then it's a certain percentage of that that can be required for cost of living. But it's, it actually comes out to a pretty reasonable rent, like in the 1,500 to $2,000. Don't quote me exactly on that. So even if you were to get, and it doesn't sound like it's going to be available if this passes, but even if you were to get a Live Local development proposed in this area, it is not necessarily like, you know, Section 8 low-income housing. It's still, you know, pretty much close to market rents that we have here in Cape Canaveral. So I wouldn't be too afraid of that. The lack of control over zoning and setbacks, I'll obviously understand your consternation. But having a mixed use ordinance is a good thing. It's something that Cape Canaveral's been lacking and I hope you support it going forward. Hopefully, some projects will come forward. I stated at the December meeting and I'll reiterate in my personal humble opinion, I think the staff was maybe a little bit too restrictive in drafting the areas where this can, where this can be utilized. I think time will tell whether or not, once this, if this ordinance is implemented, whether or not you get any projects in those specific areas. But you do have a PUD ordinance under the, in the Land Development Code, which is great so that if any other projects that are worthy of your consideration come forward, they can obviously follow that track as well with, you know, plenty of council and public input. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Andrea Shaking?
Okay, first of all, I was absolutely horrified to learn that the legislature had passed such a piece of legislation whereby it takes away the responsibility and the authority of our elected officials to have a say in this, that it is being administered administratively. I just find that to be totally unconstitutional. But that's my opinion. Can, I have a question. Can, given the fact that this is administratively administered and it doesn't go through council for vote, does the planning and zoning play a part in this at all? Planning and zoning committee? Will they, will they have anything whatsoever to say about this? Make a recommendation or either way?
Let's do this, Andrea, if you don't mind. Can we take that question down? And then when you're finished, we can go through and answer those. I think we can do that.
Well, I only have one other thing that I wanted to mention. And that is if I can get a copy of the slide presentation. I would like to have a copy of that so I can study it, peruse it. And you did a nice job with that, Mr. Garganese. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, I can get a copy?
Yeah, you can get it from the City Clerk.
All right, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. That was all the public comment cards I have and I don't, or do not see any other hands raised. So yes, we'll go ahead. I think I want to capture the question. The administrative approval process of Live Local is real and in effect, but the mixed use policy that, or land use plan that we are adopting follows a process that relies heavily on the council and it would not be in conflict with Live Local.
In my opinion, no. Yeah, this is a completely, mixed use as proposed is a completely council-driven approval process. And multiple layers.
Was that your question? Because I know we were. Thank you. The attorney, could you help with that?
With respect to, in Cape Canaveral, this is my opinion, with respect to the approval, any potential approval of a Live Local project, while Live Local excludes the governing body from the approval process, the site plan approval process in Cape Canaveral right now is already administratively subject to community development director's approval. So the planning and zoning board, in my opinion, would still have to conduct a public hearing on a Live Local project and provide advice and recommendation to the community development director who would administratively approve a site plan. So there's some public hearing in there. But they, the legislature preempted the local governing bodies' ability to participate in the approval process for whatever reason.
Or anything that has the effect of a public hearing.
Yeah, but the administrative, well, I would take the position that the administrative approval process that's already in place in Cape Canaveral, the community development director requires advice and direction of the planning and zoning board, which is not the governing body. If I, if I could put some words on that, I think what I'm hearing is a recommendation for approval from a planning and zoning board would not be inappropriate for Live Local because it's not a final order, it's not a final action. The final action is the administrative part of it. So we could have as many recommendations as we want from as many boards as we want. They're just, they're not final action.
Yeah, and if that statute exists and is in effect and if a project is being delayed or going through, I mean, this is.
It used to be.
Before this existed, it wouldn't even really, other than private property rights, which is a big deal. But here, they, they're really trying to speed up the approval process, is what I'm sensing, and not get bogged down with legislative approvals. But I think it comes with a whole slew of other risks. As I've said, on administrative approvals, I wouldn't want that liability on your side. And I think that the state put it on the shoulders, not based on competence, intelligence, expertise. But I think the process today works really well, that your recommendations are factored seriously by a council that's elected by the people. So it's tough and, you know, if that concern that I just said is real, I think we'll see the effects of it. Or it'll work smooth and projects get approved and everyone's happy. But thank you and thank you for your question. If you don't mind, I would, if, come back up to the microphone if you have another. It is a public hearing item and if anyone else would like to speak, we have not closed public hearing.
Just, just a comment. I would imagine that the little city of Cape Canaveral is not going to be the only city that's going to be grappling with this. And I wouldn't be a bit surprised, in fact, I'm hopeful that this is brought back before the legislature as, essentially as an unconstitutional act on their part, taking away the voice of the taxpayer and their elected officials to consider thoughtfully these kinds of decisions and laying it on an employee, no offense, but that's essentially what's happening. The employee is not answerable to the community, to the residents, to the taxpayers, to the citizens. That's my beef with it. I mean, if you all, you know, if it was something like you decided yes and you were representing, you were taking a vote on it, that this was going to go through, you were going to go do with the project, go through the project like this, all well and good. You can't argue with that. That was done in the proper way. This isn't proper and that's my problem with it. I, like I said, I was horrified when I saw this. And I let Tyler Seroy know about it and I never received a response. I think that says it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Anyone from home? This is our second and final reading. Seeing none, if you did turn in a card, please come forward. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public participation and bring it back to the council. So thankfully, we've got to hear some comments. We've got to hear, I think, a few at the first meeting as well. I just want to reference, there was some concerns that were emailed to us too. I saw concerns on social media and some of the groups. The, I think one of the differences between this meeting and the last is we did request, city manager, if you don't mind, I think there was some new information provided that could be helpful on physically, when applying these standards and looking at the city, just to get an estimate of how many properties this would impact and specifically which ones.
So Mayor, I'd be glad to. Mia, if you'd go to page four of five of this agenda cover. The first one we talked about was, well, we already did Live Local, we reviewed that. The second one we talked about last month was a requirement for a minimum of seven acres. And the council did acknowledge that you can aggregate lots to satisfy, get to seven acres. But council also requested that a map of existing parcels, which are seven acres or larger and ineligible locations be provided. That is in here as attachment six. All we did was we looked at parcels that were seven acres or larger and in the eligible area and just color coded them and put them on a map. But we're not saying that these parcels are being considered currently for mixed use. It's just an idea of what seven acre parcels we have. And the third and final thing is we had a discussion about net area and how net area is calculated. So what I did was I pasted in there, the indented portion is the operative language about net developable area. It essentially says there are things that you don't count against the net area, such as swimming pools, landscaping, setbacks. Those things you don't count against it. But going down to the last few lines there, the things that do count against it is land already developed, roadways, and I take that to mean public roadways, waterways, again, public waterways, and lands unsuitable for development. So with that lens in mind, I put two examples together. So the first example is a 10-acre parcel. They want to have outside parking area of this much acreage, a landscape of this much tennis and pickleball, 2.2 setbacks, 0.4 and 0.1. And I said the total area of all those is 1.5. And the mayor corrected me, it's actually 1.7 and he's correct, that's a typo. Since the proposed comp plan language for the net developable area allows the developer to include every one of those things, and go to the next page, Mia, the density calculation can still be based on the full 10 acres in that case. But let's take another example. A 10-acre parcel is designed for proposed mixed use. Part of the design, architect's going to have all those same amenities of the previous example. But in this case, let's say the parcel also has a three-acre canopy of oak trees that the council negotiates to preserve and designate as a conservation area. In this example, the conservation area is something that can be deducted from the density. So that 10 acres would go down to seven and the max density would be based on seven. So what I do is I summarize here and say, density is a product of the net acreage, but area deductions are only eligible for these six specified things. And those things are as specified in our current code under definitions for developable area. And I had some discussion with council members about roadways and what it means and waterways and what it means. And this is consistent language in the code. So it's taken as, yeah, we mean public roadways, yeah, we mean public waterways. And I don't think we need to clarify that in this ordinance. So those are the things that we, we talked about and bringing back for second reading, Mayor. And I just want to mention that if approved, this would be transmitted to the state department. Dave, what's the name of the department? Department of Commerce. Yeah, it used to be Department of Economic Opportunity. They're the department that's charged with reviewing and approving comp plan language amendments. They already had one look at this and they had no comments. Send it back to us. If we approve it, we just send it back to them and they have a copy of it and it goes into our comp plan. The only other thing I think we should mention is this ordinance also authorizes live work units, which we talked about. That's when existing commercial property can have a residential unit brought into it. That's an administrative thing. And that small scenario of a commercial property having a residential use as part of it is administrative according to this code. The rest of it, the big mixed use projects that are seven acres, there's a full laundry list of things that council has control over that are enumerated more specifically in this ordinance. Mayor?
Thank you. Okay. Counsel, any questions? I got a few more or comments. Attachment six is where I'm looking and we can jump in here. So the goal is, we've had mixed use. We've seen mixed use happen in the city on the small scale. We've seen mixed use as code violations and unfortunate situations where it made it sense. It was a couple of units on the top floor, a business on the bottom. And I think if we can allow those to happen, that's huge, a big win, especially for the existing infrastructure and people being able to work, run their business from the bottom floor is a really good thing. But when we get into these larger projects, really large based on the minimum, we're making them large. We're not capping, but we're putting a minimum on there, similar to hotels. A lot of folks talk about hotels. Well, we have a net minimum. And I think the intent there was to, you know, focus on quality projects back when those were passed. And today, we look at net, really from what I understand, Todd, there's not a lot that subtracts from it. I mean, it's pretty much, go to the property appraiser website, click on a parcel, and if you see seven acres, you're there. Thanks to city staff for helping put this together. Just going, and I did not put this together, city manager and the team, probably community development director David, I would imagine you helped contribute to this. But the column second to the end there, existing zoning. And so these are, these properties identified by parcel letters. I'll say parcel B, the second one, has an R3 zoning. Is that allowed under our, would that work?
Yes, because it's over seven acres and it is on West Central, so that makes it eligible. Remember, we're talking about mixed use, not live local.
Existing zoning does not have an effect. Okay.
If you remember what the ordinance requires, a mixed use project is going to have to get several levels of approval. One is the council will have to approve a development agreement. The other important thing is we're going to rezone any property that's going to be approved as a mixed use. We'll be rezoning it to a PUD. So there's nothing in the draft ordinance that says the eligible property has to be any specific zoning, but the council will control a rezoning of the property to a PD.
So there's no mention of zoning, it's really driven by the road that it is?
It's, yes, sir. It's the road has to be, has to front as specific roads and also the seven acres and it also has to be within the overlay district.
It has to be in the overlay. Okay, so that's a form of zoning.
It's certainly a locational criteria. Yes, sir.
The west side of A1A, the economic opportunity overlay district, EOD
Yes, sir.
Ends at, is it, on the west side of A1A, is it, is it Holman Road and McKinley? Is it that intersection?
No, sir, it stops at the property line of Cape Shores, at the north side of Cape Shores.
The north side of Cape Shores. So the balance of properties that's not included in the EOD was there?
South of that is not in the EOD. Cape Shores and everything south is not.
So they would not be allowed?
Right.
Correct.
Would any of those properties, do you know if they'd meet the seven acre minimum?
I don't think they do.
No. The only one that, on the south side of the city, the only property that currently meets those is property E and that's the IAP parcel.
It currently meets?
It's in the overlay, it's over seven acres and it fronts on an eligible road.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm just trying, and we don't have a copy of the EOD map.
If you look at that map back in the corner, most of the, the EOD
Can we bring that forward, Kyle? That's very helpful to see.
Ah, there we go.
And I'm just trying to think about who's being left out, right? Citywide is easier when we start boxing it in, it shrinks the number and, yes, non-EOD properties. Thanks, Kyle. Yes, so that northern EOD boundary there, that carve out, does everyone see the carve out there, the rectangular area towards the northeast, is, that's port, no, to the east. Come back over.
To the right.
Keep going, you're on the perfect latitude. Yep, right there. Just right there, yes. Is that carved out? Portside Villas as a relevant frame of reference and so, and that's George King. Those properties to the northwest are large in scale and then along really the river, which is all residential development with an exception IAP. Okay.
It's Todd was saying, the over great district and, yeah, it's the IAP, that's the last piece moving south.
And that property, just as an, to scale, is E 10.8 acres, so that's well over. Okay. What was the language that we saw about residential, Anthony? Why is that ringing in my head? In your presentation, live local, is there any crossover here with, it said not residential, cannot be residential?
Right, yeah, live local projects, the preemptions don't apply to residential zoning districts.
The preemptions do not.
Do not apply. You can't force a live local project in a residential zoning district. They can only go in, have to go in industrial or commercial
Okay.
or mixed use.
And so this would open up those properties for a live local property?
Well, my interpretation of mixed use, it's mixed use that doesn't allow residential. And that, what's, 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 what's unique about this particular comp plan designation is that in order to get a mixed use future land use map designation, you have to come to the city council with a defined concrete project and have a development agreement and run concurrently the PUD zoning designation combined. So at the end of the day, if the council ever approves a mixed use future land use designation, the council is going to be approving a specific project that's being presented to you. The council is just not going to generally apply a mixed use designation and hope somebody comes to the city in the future with a project. Like your current zoning designations, you know, you have currently industrial, commercial, residential, somebody comes in with a residential project, they follow the traditional regulations. To get mixed use, you have to present a bona fide concrete project to get the designation, to even be eligible to be considered to get this designation.
Okay.
Does that make, it's, it's
So
It's very development.
When we look at existing zoning, if we allowed this to be, these properties to be mixed use, they would retain their existing zoning until the mixed use project was brought before the city and there was a valid project. Am I understanding that correctly?
The project would be approved at the same time as the future land use maps, map designation of mixed use.
Yeah, even though the
At the same time.
Okay, so it wouldn't change the old?
No.
No, it's not going to change the old one.
That's a big, that's a big plus. So that's why I'm asking that, that's good to know. Thank you.
Mixed use and then it's going to have a PUD zoning designation specifically for that property and a binding development agreement for a specific project. That's, that's the Whopper sandwich, you're getting all three layers there at the same time. So there's no speculation. Like right now, you have industrial property that's vacant.
Right.
The potential use is just speculative at this point. That's not how this is written.
Thank you.
And I know this, the council may not have a lot of experience with what Anthony is talking about, the PUD zoning district. I know we've done one in the last 10 years or so. It was the life storage property up on Astronaut. But when the, when the PD, a PUD is approved, there's a number of safeguards that are put in place and one of them is what's known as a binding site plan. So if you were to like rezone a piece of property to R2, there's a lot of different permitted uses in R2 that could go there. With a PD, you are getting a binding site plan, so it shows exactly what's going to happen on that piece of property, to include number of units, square footage of retail, where the parking spaces are, it nails down everything on that site plan. So there's no guesswork, you know exactly what you're going to get. And that's the beauty of a PUD, the PUD process is, there's, as Anthony said, there's no guesswork. It's laid out right there for you and it will not change unless the council decides to change it in the future.
Have a question?
Yes, Mayor Proton.
The property's down on Central, or not Central, Center. Would they be under, I mean, they would have to be, a project would have to come to the council for that specific property?
Yes. And the reason that, I know we've had some discussions about the mixed use project on Center Street and the reason it's not on this site is any one of those parcels alone is not seven acres, they would have to be aggregated.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Willis.
This is directed either Dave or Anthony. As it currently exists, only property, parcels A, C, D and E would be impacted by live local if a project were to come in.
Yep.
Based on, based on this map.
The question, Anthony, is because parcel B is zoned residential, live local, the preemptions would not apply to that piece of property.
But the other four are
The other four would be subject to the preemptions because they're non-residential or commercial.
Correct. Future land use map designations of C2 or C1?
That's fine.
Yep, and if it does not apply to residential, whereas these preemptions and we, but we open up a residential, can that, and we allow that, could that be used? And does that open up all residential now? Because are we opening up residential when we, when it's preempted or does not apply? Does that make sense what I'm asking? So, so for example, the R3 property, the only one I see on here, density gets increased to 30 units per acre. Now, would we, essentially, if another project came along, could they match that same density under the live local? Or is it just not applicable?
Yeah, I would, I would
Would that raise the residential threshold?
Well, I would, my position would be no, because 15 dwelling units is the maximum allowed in Cape Canaveral? This ordinance allows a bonus of 15 additional up to, up to 30. So the bonus is not allowed unless the council approves the project and development agreement. And if the new law, if the proposed legislation passes, it certainly clarifies the existing law because bonuses don't count, they're not considered allowed. It's not your base allowed, so it's a bonus and it's site specific. So, I mean, that's just my interpretation of the current, of the current law. And would be clarified if the new legislation passes. And if you look at the proposed mixed use policy, it actually refers to the additional 15 dwelling units as a bonus.
Okay.
At council's sole discretion.
Thank you. So the, you know, the old special exception process, when we had all these commercial properties and one by one, they would come in and be approved for residential use along North Atlantic. That was through the, I assume, P and Z and then the council would approve those special exceptions, right?
That's how I recall them being
On a case by case basis?
Special exceptions are, go to P and Z first, they make a recommendation to the Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustment had the final say.
Yeah, council was not involved in special exceptions.
Council took that ability away around 2014, I think, and today we're doing this administrative rezoning, but on a case by case basis, Board of Adjustment were approving individual projects in a commercial zone.
Correct.
This process is councils approving projects in the zones mentioned on a case by case basis with a lot more hoops to jump through, i.e. the workshop and that, and those things.
And the different capacity too, Mayor, because in order to get a mixed use designation in a development agreement, it requires a legislative decision by the city council, not a quasi judicial decision. When the Board of Adjustment was acting on all those special exception requests, they were, they were following the code that the council passed and exercising quasi judicial authority. My point being that the council has, in order to get a mixed use designation, has to exercise legislative authority, which is far more discretionary than a quasi judicial matter. The city council actually has to adopt legislation, change the future land use map. So it's tighter, more discretion than what even the Board of Adjustment had many years ago when they were approving special exception.
And so those were, you know, turning the red commercial zoning map yellow, yellow and today we're doing big tranches of C1 to R2.
Generally, that's the case, yes.
In most, and we're about to take those up here, but we're going through those on a case by case basis. And so we, and prior to 2014, you could by special exception, build a residential home in an overly commercial zoned area. But, I mean, if you really look at what we're doing today with this rezoning, we are dramatically increasing the supply of residential zoning, because after 2014, all of those commercial red zoned areas were off limits for residential development. And so Cape Canaveral being 95, 97% built out has, over the past five years, increased the residential opportunities and essentially the supply or the ability to increase the supply of housing, which is really, I think, important. It's prime real estate though too, right? In the state of Florida, beachfront property and affordable is really difficult. Talking through that as a percentage of AMI is great, but we have, I think, it's tough to go through, for me, the mixed use is, it's hard to see. I can see these big properties, but where I was getting more excited, it was actually along, you know, the smaller ones and understanding that, but the workshops that are going to be required is encouraging and the thresholds that those workshops need to hit is something that I think is really important if not addressed. If it's subject to public notice requirements, that's great, but is we as a city leaving it completely up to the private property owner to host the workshop, as I understand, is that correct? Or is it the city is going to facilitate the public notice requirements? Because I could see where that would be, could be a challenge.
The way, the way that it's worded now, the applicant is responsible for conducting at least one neighborhood workshop.
And do we define the workshop or have the ability to?
We will have, we mentioned here that staff will need to develop an appropriate protocol for conducting the meeting. Obviously, we're going to want there to be something useful coming out of that, that the council can rely on, so we would have to develop that protocol. This, this is just comp plan language, it doesn't get into that detail yet.
Because I think that's where it gives, okay, so that's what we talked about last time though, was hey, after this comp plan passes, are there going to be any more things that we need to adopt? I think on the smaller live work, yes was the answer, it's going
Correct, that's right, that's right.
Land use. But on this, we, we will have to.
I'm, I'm not sure we contemplated any specific code changes, but there would be some, just like we, you know, there would be some administrative rules that we would adopt, that would, that would inform a, a public notice process. I don't know, Anthony, you got any thoughts on that?
I know we, we tried to adopt this as a self-implementing set document, right?
Yeah.
Now, that doesn't mean that the council can't adopt additional, you know, complementary policies consistent with this, if necessary. You know, th, this policy places the responsibility on the applicant to actually conduct. Okay, so it's written to, to, you know, basically mandate that the applicant conduct these pub, this public, publicly noticed community workshop. But it, but it also says that the workshop is held on the date, time, location approved by the city prior to the application being presented to the council for approval at a public hearing. So, you know, the city's still involved in it and making sure that it is conducted properly. But the burden would be on the applicant to do the presentation. Wouldn't be a staff-oriented presentation, but staff would be there, obviously, listening and taking notes. That's the way these usually occur. This, this ordinance also requires that a minimum, that the developer present at these public workshops, you know, demonstrative concept plans of, for the project and, and elevations for, for the project. So the point I'm trying to make is the burden is on the applicant to conduct the workshop. There are minimum requirements that have to be presented at the workshop. And the city will tell you the date, time, and, and place of the workshop.
Okay.
If there needs to be some other administrative rule to fill the gap, then, you know, so be it. But we tried to cover the basics, make it, make it meaningful. Not just the developer just show up and, you know, posted a notice on a telephone pole and shows up with, you know, an eight-and-a-half by a piece of eleven piece of paper. No, this is intended to be more like a charrette-type situation with.
It would be helpful if, if this, if something we're going to move is to see and what the process looks like in some sort of administrative document that says, hey, I'm a developer. Or I'm a resident and I want to know about this development. What does the developer go through, or the property owner go through in, in a concise area? And I would really like, again, even if we go forward, is to bring this to a workshop. Because we talked about the workshops for the, the property owners. And I think it would make sense that we have, when we were ready to go, some sort of public-facing workshop that says, here's our new mixed-use policy, here's the process. And to present that, those property owners, I would hope, would come to that workshop. And I hope that the residents and the abutting property owners would come to that. And so everyone can say, we've got it in our comp plan, here's kind of the nuts and bolts of how it works. Obtain that feedback so that we, as a council, have enough time to go back in and make any adjustments that will help protect some of the concerns about overbuilding, taking density too high. And, and, yeah, I, I think that those are traffic, stormwater, wastewater, all the, the, the issues and the concerns, not in my backyard. These have been two public hearing items, it was at P and Z, I understand that. But it's a lot, and especially when we take in the live local. It's an intense process that I think the residents would largely be happy to see, even if it was a presentation of some sort from city staff, as long as the citizens had a chance to, to communicate. That would be helpful for me as a councilman, as, as an entire council and to sit together and say, here we go, we're off. Because I do want it to, to be effective. And most importantly, citizens are excited about it. And so today, it's hard to see through the fog of the, the two state bills, the pending legislation, this. And those are my comments, so. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Whip. And there are so many safeguards that, just because they applied, or doesn't mean we have to do it. So there are so many safeguards, and I think if we don't approve to move forward with this, we're going to be hurting ourselves. We have to at least give the opportunity, so. I agree with Mr. Hermanson.
Yes.
I agree also that I, we need to move forward with this, is there a step in the right directions for the city? And I agree with Mayor, you know, once this is passed, and to have a public hearing and, and explain to the residents and developers how it works and, and, you know, what it's going to do exactly. But I think we need to pass this to move forward, to build a tax base, to attract businesses as well.
Thank you. Any other comment, Councilmember Willis?
Uh, yeah, I think we should move forward as well, but I can see how we need to be sure the public understands that these five parcels here are not being rezoned. We're just creating a designation, we're not rezoning anything. And none of that would happen until a project came to us. Now that, I think that information getting out to the public would ease some concerns so that they know it's just not wide open for anything now. But I do have, I share, Councilmember Jackson's concern about how do we control the short-term rental aspect of that? And, you know, we, we do have a, a fine line to walk anytime we start messing with the ordinance that controls that, because we'll lose it all if we make an amendment to it. But that's, those are my concerns.
Well, yeah, what I don't, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Jackson.
I feel a lot better that this isn't being rezoned, and thank you for clarifying that for me. That part of it is great, and I appreciate our city attorney and all the presentation, because these are two separate things. I think that's very important for our residents to know. Live local and mixed-use are entirely separate. I still think, though, like you're saying, Mayor Morrison, it's a great idea to communicate this because it is very detailed, and the average citizen here isn't going to understand this. And so I want to ensure that our citizens know that when it comes to live local, there's new legislation pending. That's a, that's fantastic news. But also the fact that council has control over those mixed-use properties, with a lot of work having to be done, completed by those developers before that can go in. I think that's important, and along with Councilmember Willis, I, he mentioned this, and it's the truth. It, with it not being rezoned, that's a, a different story. Because it still gives us the ability to control those projects as they come to us as a council.
Thank you. Okay, and thank you all for your comments. City manager, any?
I'm just wondering about this piece about the public information, and I'm wondering if it might be a good idea, while it's all fresh in, in our heads, Dave, to write a memo to that, that would talk about Q and A style? Maybe not a memo, maybe put it, put it on the website, a, a section about this, what it is, what it does, and how it works, and the typical questions we've had already at the dais, but the people might be asking out there in the community. Just a summary of mixed-use, and then what live local, how, how it does and doesn't interface with that.
Yeah, that's certainly helpful. To me, it was more about, it's like a flowchart, it's some, a picture, an infographic of some sort of the steps. It was more about the order of steps.
Of a mixed-use.
That, that city, of a, 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 step one, applicant sub.
We've, we've generated those, it's more like a flowchart. If this happens, then this happens, and it just shows you how the, you progress or a potential progression of a project.
Yes, and if you, there was a overlay to present that and to go through each step, it would be a tool. Because if either, you know, it's going to work or not, and this map changes, right? If somebody splits these parcels or subdivides and sells them, they disappear on their own consent. And so that's, yes, those FAQs very important. But people, I think, it, there's a lot of words here, and so distilling down the big questions are really good, but the, the flow and the, the steps to develop a mixed-use project in Cape Canaveral, I would think the audience should be the private property owner who's interested. That's going to be the most valuable to the resident, because they can see this is what they need to do.
So a mixed-use infographic on the website.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll put together a, Kyle's very good at flowcharts and graphing things out like that.
Mr. Mayor.
From that, we can, yes, Councilmember Willis?
Just one other comment. I think it would be important to point out to the residents and citizens of Cape Canaveral that by adopting this, doesn't totally remove any input, because we're not rezoning anything. They get to look at whatever that project's going to be, they get to voice their opinion. They can, they can come before council, because we'll be taking it up again on an individual basis. So I think it's important to point out to them that this is not the end of their input.
Actually, the proposed process probably, I would suggest, increases the opportunities to.
Yeah, it's actually more than what you currently have, because developer knocks on the door, they can't even file an application under this ordinance. They have to first come to the city council to do a non-binding presentation, to present their concept idea, before they can even submit an application. So the entry to the developers before the application process to come to a public meeting in front of you all.
If we remember anything, that's a really important one, is step one is present to the council the concept.
Yeah, before an application is filed.
Well, and the public gets to see the potential of what might be underneath the residential portion of it. I mean, we, we all get residents clamoring for, why don't we have this? Why don't we have certain doctors? Why don't we have a dentist here? Why, why don't we, you know, why don't we have a grocery store or whatever? But this gives them the opportunity to see what the potential might be, or what the developer envisions being there. I don't know how they're going to secure those businesses, but, you know, that's part of it.
Yeah, we, just as an FYI, Kyle and I had a conference call this morning with a group about our mixed-use ordinance in second reading this evening, and we were talking about the retail section and about a grocery store, actually, being a part of a mixed-use project. And so it, it opens up, because we've got, you've got, you've got that carrot, the residential carrot. And you've, and it's, it's going to be a, it's going to be, it's going to be very complicated and very thorough, but it'll be, hopefully, it'll hopefully open up some opportunities that we currently don't have.
So would minimum square footage be controlled by council for the live units?
Well, it, it's not explicitly addressed in this policy, but it will be controlled by the city council when, when the council considers a PUD ordinance. The minimum square footage, like, but it's not, it's not explicit in this particular policy. Like, right now, under your R, under the city's R three zoning designation, you know, the minimum square footage for an efficiency is four hundred and fifty square feet, one bedroom, six hundred and fifty, two-bedroom plus is seven hundred and fifty plus two hundred square foot per additional bedroom. I mean, that's in your traditional R three zoning designation. There are no minimums or maximums in, in this proposed policy. It would have to be determined based on a project-specific application.
So as part of what we would address as council, we would be able to address the actual density based on number of units per acreage? And then even potentially the size of the units to.
Absolutely.
Keep us from having, be, being overbuilt density-wise in the live portion of the units.
The way the PUD zoning ordinance would work, yes, you would, with respect to the residential units, the, the council would establish at least what the minimum square footage is for, for the units.
Thank you.
I, I know you don't have a lot of experience with PDs, and most of us don't, but that's, when you, when you're, when the developer comes in now and they're developing in all of our established residential R one, R two, R three, the city code has all of those minimums, they're all, all those specifics are spelled out. In a PD, you can consider that as a blank slate, and the council can determine all of those things. It needs to be reasonable, you can't, you know, can't go crazy with it. But, but the council gets to determine, if, if that's an issue for the council on square footage, that can be a, a condition of approval per the PD, as Anthony talked about. So it's, it really gives a, a lot of control and flexibility to the council.
And that's what I wanted to make sure and communicate, so that our citizens that watch this know that that kind of thing can be controlled with mixed-use, because we don't have as much control with live local.
It's more customizable to council's desires when it comes to mixed-use.
Thank.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance number ten, twenty twenty-three. We've closed public comment. I think we've, we went through this. Council, what do we want to do?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number ten, twenty twenty-three at the second reading.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, second by Councilmember Willis, to adopt ordinance number ten, twenty twenty-three on second reading. Any further discussion, debate, comment? Seeing none, city clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance ten, twenty twenty-three passes five oh in second and final reading. Thank you all. Now moving on to the next ordinance, this is number five. I want to pause for a moment here and see, we, I do have one card left that has not been read, and it was for item number nine. Miss, is Jenna Poole here?
Yes, I am, yes, Port.
Port, uh, thank you very much. I don't see, is anyone else here to speak? Maybe you didn't fill out a card on any item other than that. Council, if, if this is okay, city attorney and all, if we could move that one ahead, if that'd be okay with you, so that we can allow her to speak on this item. So item number nine, is that correct, that you wanted to speak with? Can we go ahead and, and go to item number nine?
If that's, if that's the wishes of the council, sure, we can bounce right to that ordinance.
Okay.
What ordinance is.
For the sake of, and then we can move through. Okay, item number nine, ordinance number oh-nine, twenty twenty-four. City attorney?
Okay, same as first reading, I'll read both the proposed comprehensive plan, future land use map ordinance in, by title, and then the companion rezoning ordinance by title, and then the council can conduct one public hearing regarding the two ordinances, and then consider approval of the ordinances by separate vote. So the first ordinance is ordinance number zero-nine dash twenty twenty-four. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation for several parcels of property legally described as lots one and two of Jefferson Villas Phase Two. according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 49, page 26 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 108 and 110 Jefferson Avenue, lots one and two of Jefferson Villas. According to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 48, page seven of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 112 and 114 Jefferson Avenue, lots five, six, seven, and eight of San Thomas Villas Phase Two, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 36, page nine of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 116, 118, 120, and 122 Jefferson Avenue, lots 12, 13, and 14 of San Thomas Villas Phase Four, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 36 and page 80 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 124, 126, and 128 Jefferson Avenue, lots one and two of Adams Villas Phase Two, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 48, page six of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 107 and 109 Adams Avenue, lots one and two of Adams Villas replat, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 47 and page 77 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 111 and 113 Adams Avenue, lots one, two, three, and four of San Thomas Villas, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 35, page 13 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 115, 117, 119, and 121 Adams Avenue, lots nine, 10, and 11 of San Thomas Villas Phase Three, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 36, page 55 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, located at 123, 125, and 127 Adams Avenue, from C1 commercial to R2 residential, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A, attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolution severability incorporation into the comprehensive plan and an effective date. Now the companion rezoning ordinance is ordinance 10-2024. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment for several parcels of property legally described as lots one and two of Jefferson Villas Phase Two, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 49, page 26 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, located 108 and 110 Jefferson Avenue, lots one and two Jefferson Villas, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 48, page seven of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 112 and 114 Jefferson Avenue, lots five, six, seven, eight, and of San Thomas Villas plat two, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 36, page nine of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 116, 118, 120, and 122 Jefferson Avenue, lots 12, 13, and 14 of San Thomas Villas Phase Four, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 36, page 80 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 124, 126, and 128 Jefferson Avenue, lots one and two of Adams Villas Phase Two, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 48, page six of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 107 and 109 Adams Avenue, lots one and two of the Adams Avenue Villas replat, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 47, page 77 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 111 and 113 Adams Avenue, lots one, two, three, four of San Thomas Villas. According to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 35, page 13 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 115, 117, 119, and 121 Adams Avenue, lots nine, 10, and 11 of San Thomas Villas Phase Three, according to the plat thereof, recorded at plat book 36, page 55 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 123, 125, and 127 Adams Avenue, from the current city C1 low-density commercial zoning district designation to the city R2 medium-density residential zoning district designation, providing for the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on exhibit A, attached to two, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolution severability and an effective date.
Both of these ordinances are second and final reading, also public hearing item. Mayor.
Very much, City Attorney. City Manager, any comments on this one?
No, sir.
Counsel, any questions at this time for city staff? This is a public hearing item. Do you have a card? Jen, I believe you're ready to go. If you'd like to speak, now's the time. Thank you very much. Come forth.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for moving it up a little bit. Councilmembers, and thank you, City Attorney, for reading all of that for us. I'm here because I'm the owner at 107 Adams, which is commercially zoned. And I totally understand why you would want to change, you know, 111, 113, 15, 17, 119, 121, 123, 125, 127, the whole block. It's all residential down that whole block. And as you can see in that thing. But I'm at the very beginning of the block, right bordering North Atlantic Avenue. And you probably are familiar with it. It's across from the, it's, it's, we're right next to the auto shop and right across from the pizza place and the, and the liquor store. And it, because it borders North Atlantic Avenue, I had made a request to keep it zoned commercially, just to give me options in the future. My current use is residential for it. We, my husband and I, we love Cape Canaveral. We come here on weekends to enjoy Cape Canaveral. We, we want to retire here and move here. But we haven't been able to yet because of work obligations. We live in Orlando, so we, you know, bought a house a couple of years ago so that we could enjoy weekends in the beach, which we have been doing. And, and so in between, you know, to help offset the cost, of course, is, we, we short-term rented it out. I know you're not a total fan of short-term renting, but it's been, it's been really good to help us offset the cost. We did move to long-term rental this year because my daughter started UCF and I wanted to make sure I could pay her college bills. But it's just in the, I wanted to make sure that I was going to have flexibility to still be able to use it and, and rent it out. And again, potentially in the future, I'm, I'm not sure if it should be residential. It is right next, right along that strip. And it, like I mentioned, it borders the, borders the, the auto shop. Right, it borders right around North Atlantic, across from the liquor store. We get, unfortunately, we have to clean up some of the, the bottles that get thrown into our yard on some, you know, over the weekend. So I'm, I'm kind of open to, to what we could do to resolve this because I, I, you know, I understand what you're trying to, to get to. But I also am thinking that maybe to keep it zoned, C1 might be its best and highest use.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate your comments. And we will discuss, this property is of the subject in 106 Adams?
107.
107, thank you. Do we have the land use map for that one? Or the, the, yes, the attached two, I think. So the proposal today, so it's the northwest corner of this yellow highlighted area. That is one, one parcel, and that is a townhome, I believe, currently being used. A duplex, both where one side, that, that property line there, is that where the duplex is split? I know we don't really have numbers on this, so it's hard to see. But the one, the top left and the next one beside it, is that the shared wall of the duplex?
Yeah, the property line runs underneath the shared wall.
Thank you for the mouse cursor, that's helpful. And so the property frontage on North Atlantic, as Ms. Port said, there's a mechanic across the street on the, on the north side there. Yes, Dave's Beach Auto and obviously the Cumberland Farms and the, the Plaza, all many shared businesses through there. And so we are currently, this is on today's C1. We are changing the zoning to residential. And the council has to consider withholding one of these. And so essentially, the top left there would stay C1 if this request was met. Is that what I'm understanding from your public comment? Just you want to remain commercial? Okay. I don't have any, or excuse me, do not have any other public comment cards? I did not have any records. Does anyone else want to speak on this issue? Seeing none, we can go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council. Counsel, thoughts, considerations, motions?
I have a question or a statement.
Yes.
Just like I was speaking about with the multi-use properties being on a commercial property and how can we prevent a live local developer from short-term renting out what's supposed to be an affordable housing scenario? This is another, another situation where being zoned commercial allows one-night rentals in our city when you have a residential property on a commercially zoned lot. And one thing that we've heard consistently for years is that people, there are people that are in favor of the six-night minimum rentals for short-term where they are tired of noise, parking, trash being thrown in their yard and that type of thing. And what we're doing is essentially allowing certain properties in the city to do nightly rentals where other ones are not able to do that just based on historic zoning from back in the day and what it's zoned at now. So I have a, and it's funny because, Jenna, I'm not actually against short-term rentals. I actually work in short-term rentals. But I am in favor of making sure we all have a level playing field. And we've had someone else that's come before us wanting to keep a commercial status on a residential property when truly people have voiced this for years. If we're going to do that, it's time to level the playing field, okay? If we want to, as a council, allow somebody to do one-night rentals, then we need to do it throughout the city. If we don't want to allow it, then we need, it's time that we tighten these things up because this is non-conforming property from historically zoned commercial property, zoning. So to me, this is exactly what we're trying to clean up when we look at these things. And we, we want to make sure that we're consistent going forward. The citizens have always said minimum six-night. Believe me, that was a painful experience. If you're in rentals the last six months, it was painful. There are short-term rental investor owners and people here in the city that they hurt last six months. They made zero. They had no one in their properties. So we need to consider that because if you're doing the right thing and you're not getting any business at all because you're following the ordinances and we're allowing one property to do nightly rentals, I'm sorry. I'm ju, I, I think that needs to be tightened up. And I hate that, Jenna, because I know you want to do that, but you can do six-night minimums. It's just that we are truly back to our peak periods and our non-peak periods where no one's here. And back in the day, we would all throw our hands in the air and say, woo-hoo, it's our island again. But during the pandemic times, we got really dizzy and, and learned to depend on those rentals all year long. And that wasn't a realistic rental market here. And that's unfortunate, but that's the way that it was during that time because people were coming here to get away from their areas where they were locked down. So I think, I think it's time we tighten this up. I hate to do that to you, Jenna, but we need to level the playing field for people. Either that or we need to look at what y'all want to do because I bought here knowing that it was a six-night minimum. That was 20-something years ago. And I've lived and played by those rules. So, you know, we need to consider as a council what we want to do with those rules.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. You're at 107, is that right?
Yes.
And you, and you said you wanted it to remain commercial because it's the highest best use. What if, God forbid, something should happen and you're non-conforming? According to this, you, you don't have the right footage or anything to build a commercial property, and that's the only thing that you would be able to do if some, something happened. Did you, and my other question is, did you know when you bought that we had a six-day minimum night stay here in the city? It's been on the books for a long time. Finally enforcing it because we are striving to be a residential neighborhood and to get families in here and to keep it a beachside residential area. So that's my questions. And if, if we had, if we grant you a special exception, does it follow the person or the building, Anthony? If she would sell, would it stay with that, the new buyer? That, that her not conform to the residential? If she keeps a commercial designation zoning? Does it stay with her or the building?
What, I'm not sure what you mean by stay. I mean, if it keeps, it's a residential unit on commercial, leaves own property. So the residential dwelling is non-conforming.
Right.
And if, and you just have to go right down the street. If there's a fire and it destroys the dwelling unit, they would not be able to rebuild the dwelling unit. I don't know if that was the point you were trying to make.
That was the point? Sorry.
No, that, no, so that, that's one of many complicated issues involving this property. And, you know, staff can give you all the, the details. Because there is a, if this was a commercial lot, just vacant, they would have significant problems, right? Building on, on such a small lot. And then staff will tell you, this is, situation is even exacerbated even more because this is a duplex. This is just one unit of a duplex. The other half of the duplex is owned by another party who right now also has a non-conforming residential structure.
Let's hold before we, if, if you want to ask a question, we will ask you to come forward. And I know she asked you some questions, if you choose to answer. Do you mind coming up to the microphone? So we're not yelling across council, are we okay? We have closed public comments, public hearing item, but she was addressing some questions from Mayor Pro Tim. And I think she has a chance to speak, so please come forward.
Yes, you said it's too small for.
Yeah, it says in the summary here that 25 setbacks are 25 feet from the front, 25 feet by the corner. The eastern property line, 15 feet from the southern property line. I'm sure Dave or Kyle could tell you more on, and even Anthony said it would be too small to build a commercial property if something, God forbid, should happen. So is that, then, if, if you had all that trouble building back as a commercial building, would that be your highest and best use of that property? I mean, to me, it would be better as a residential area than commercial.
Yeah, okay. Potentially, no. I wasn't aware of the size issue. And yes, when it, to answer your other question about, did I know it was a six-night minimum? Yes, I did know at the time I purchased the property. It didn't bother us. We were buying it for the long term and we wanted to enjoy it personally. So that wasn't really an issue for us. It actually wasn't until, and I don't think we rented out for less than six nights because the property management company actually saw it as a house, thought it was zoned residential anyway. And so it's never been rented out for less than six nights anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, counsel. Councilmember Jackson, you had a chance. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, any more comments from you?
I agree with Councilmember. I agree with Councilmember Jackson that, you know, we, we're fighting to try to tighten this up. And like, and like she says, you know, if it's, if it's right for everybody else, we shouldn't make an exception for, you know, on a property-to-property basis. The ordinance is the ordinance, and, you know, we need to rezone these mistakes that were made in the past, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis or Willis, any comments?
So thi, this was on C1. She bought it, and they bought it when it was C1. You know, the seven-day minimum did not apply to them, in fairness to them. And so in the past, right, I mean, the commercial, a commercially zoned property, when we say it was on the books, it was for the residential only. And so want to be very sensitive to that also. We have a precedent. I would love to equal and level up, but I think you, you might already know, we have excluded northern rezonings where the property owner opted. With that being said, I am not aware of any exclusion where it was a shared wall in a building. I don't know your neighbor who is on a separate parcel. And that's where I have some trouble, seriously, from, from the issues that could, could occur there. The other difference of this property is, I mean, it is on, across the street from a very intense use. It's a, it's a mechanic shop, noises, grinding, cars in and out, high traffic area. And it's also, you know, right to where kind of the city comes together. And so if this was the property, I mean, even one or two to the east, you know, requesting, no way, especially in the middle. But on the end, it is a tough decision. But it, I, I just want to be sure that, that any that we have approved on a case-by-case basis in the past, that, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not aware of a shared duplex townhome scenario on the, maybe one or two others that I recall? I can see...
Yeah, I'm not aware of allowing one of two units to opt out of the rezoning. This, the council hasn't done that before, in my view, in my recollection.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
And I think, I mean, the plat, th, th, this property has been platted as a duplex, as a townhouse project. I mean, the plat alludes to, you know, restrictions. There probably are private deed restrictions for this property because they share a party wall, too. So, you know, there are, there are private, probably private restrictions. We don't have a copy of them, but, you know, they, they would imagine that's how they manage their common wall and manage, manage the property. As another factor, as to the complex nature of trying to split this rezoning. It's almost, you know, i, i, if you were to keep it commercial, then both units would be non-conforming and would not, whereas non-conforming uses would have serious issues and about trying to rebuild it as a dwelling unit because dwelling units are no longer allowed. So, you know, if, if the vaca, the point on the vacation rental, I think you were alluding to, and maybe counsel, or Mayor Pro-Tam was alluding to it as well. You know, th, th, this property is C1. The seven, minimum seven-day rental restriction has never applied to commercial property, as you mentioned, Mayor. So my understanding is this property owner has a vacation rental registration in BTR. So if this property were to be rezoned residential, they would still have their vacation rental. And, you know, my, my view would be grandfathered in from the seven-day rule. They would, they would be able to continue to rent for less than seven days, as long as they maintain a, a vacation rental registration.
And that would be tied to the, not the property, the, the license or the registration?
Yeah, they would have to...
That would make me more...
Yeah, they would have to maintain, maintain as, as evidence that, you know, not abandoning the, the vacation rental. You know, as long as they kept their license, you know, current, their registration current. That would, you know, my view, and I've discussed this with staff, that, you know, because this property's always been C1, they would be allowed to continue to, you know, rent for less than seven days, as long as they maintain that license. So by rezoning the property, and maybe the property owner wants to consider this, that, you know, if it's rezoned, the dwelling unit becomes conforming again, right? It's, the dwelling is a conforming use. And then their vacation rental options to, and I know they're not renting for less than seven days right now, as long as they maintain that, the BTR and registration, they would be able to continue for, renting for less than seven days in the future if they decide to do so, because their, they would be, their vacation rental would be considered grandfathered.
I think that's a, sounds good, like a good solution or proposal.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One, one comment. As far as the rezoning to residential, we also have to consider the neighbor. Because if something were to happen, some tragic were to happen, he's at risk of not being able to rebuild. Because if it's a, if you maintain C1 on the west side and the east side is our residential, and the building were to burn down, he wouldn't be able to build. Because he wouldn't be able to put up a duplex again.
I think that, I mean, those circumstances are what the Board of Adjustment variances and those things. But I, I, I'm not, it, it wouldn't be easy. It would require some quasi-judicial or some legislative approval on a case-by-case basis. And I don't know...
And you got the plat restriction. And it's a townhouse subdivision. That's what the plat is.
I would...
Doesn't, there's no commer, there's no commercial use authorized on the plat, under the plat, too. So that, it's on top of the points that you made about potential variances and so forth. I mean, if this was platted as a residential development.
So regardless of whether it's residential or commercial, she still has a right to, to rent for one night, is what I'm hearing, is that correct?
Today she does.
Okay.
Yeah, today, maintain...
But if she, if we rezone to residential, she would still have that right as long as she maintained her license, correct? But, but then she would be conforming so that if anything happened to either one of those structures, we would be able to make sure that they were both taken care of as far as getting permitting to rebuild.
Right, they would both be allowed to rebuild.
Okay, thank you. And one last question. Do, just like we talked about with live, live local, I think we need to look at putting minimum rental restrictions on commercial properties. Because we're going to have commercial people renting these out in these scenarios and potentially with live local as well. So we need to maybe investigate that a little bit to see if it's even something that could happen.
Thank you. City Attorney, did you have any comments you wanted to say? I saw you raise your hand, but I don't know if it was...
Oh, no, I just said there would be a lot of the rebuild dwelling unit, so that's all, I'm good.
Councilmember, anyone else choose to speak? There was, I, I hope that you can follow up with, with city team here and whoever's appropriate and help and try to protect your interests and also recognize the challenges we face with this property being platted, shared wall. But we, you know, I, I do see that, hey, out of all of them, right? If you're going to have use, but it, it's tough. And thank you again for your comments and feedback. Anything else? If not, we can go...
I think you guys covered everything pretty much with the non-conforming status and the, the neighbor. I think, I think we covered it.
Thank you very much, Kyle. I didn't know if you wanted to speak on something. I was city attorney, or I'm sorry, city manager?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, good. Anything else, Kyle?
I'm all right, yeah.
Appreciate it, thank you. All right, I think, looking for a, a motion or...
Do we need to make some designation on this property if we're considering allowing her to continue with the residential, with the short-term rental? Or just...
No, I don't think, I don't think that needs to be in, in the motion.
Okay.
The first, the first ordinance item is Ordinance 09. That's the Futurane Use Map designation. That would be the first item to take up.
Thank you.
And then Ordinance 10 would be the second.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 092024.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion by Councilmember Willis and a second by Councilmember Davis to adopt Ordinance 092024. City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro-Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance 092024 passes 5-0. We can refer motion for ordinance the next 102024.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 10-2024.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Willis to adopt Ordinance Number 102024. Any further discussion? None, City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro-Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance 102024 passes 5-0. We were, we concluded item four, that we just finished item number nine on the agenda. We did jump ahead to allow, to respect public comment. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Ordinance, we should jump back to item number five. Anthony has, I just want to zoom out for a moment here. I know we've publicly advertised, we're at 9:43. Realistically, the read time alone's a lot. And so are there anys, any in here that we need to prioritize or change for any reason at all that would not cause a headache?
No, the rest of these are pretty straightforward.
Okay. Anthony, as you're reading this?
Yes.
I'm going to run to the restroom, but I will be back, counsel.
I can filibuster.
No, just kidding. Which I think is, which I think totally, totally appropriate. If anyone needs to use as you're reading through and we'll take it up. So thank you.
Do you want to go with Dunkin' Donuts, come back? Don't be here. Of course, this is the shorter one.
Yeah, right.
This one's easy. Okay, all right. Ordinance 01-2024. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale Futurane Use Map Amendment by changing the Futurane Use Map designation of several parcels of property legally described as lots 1 through 8 Ocean Court, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 40, page 17 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 8657, 8659, 8661, 8663, 8665, 8667, 8669, and 8671. Maple Court, from C1 Commercial to R2 Residential, providing for the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. The companion rezoning ordinance is Ordinance 02-2024. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment for several parcels of property legally described as lots 1 through 8 Ocean Court, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 40, page 17, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 8657, 8659, 8661, 8663, 8665, 8667, 8669, and 8671. Maple Court. From the current city's C1 low-density commercial zoning district designation to the city R2 medium-density residential zoning district designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, and an effective date. And this is second and final reading, also a public hearing item. Mayor Pro-Tam, the gavel's yours for about three more seconds. One, two. Way to go.
Thank you all. This time, any questions for staff? We're on item number five, Ordinance 012024. Seeing none? None? Public comment item, we're going to turn it over to the public. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward. Anyone online who'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, back to the council.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 01-2024.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Willis. Further discussion, debate? City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro-Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes 5-0. Which was Ordinance Number 012024. Now we're on to 022024. City Attorney, I believe, already read this? Thank you.
Make a motion, we adopt ordinance number...
No, we're right, we went to public comment for both of those items, thank you.
That's right.
I'll second.
022024.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro-Tim Kellum and a second by Councilmember Willis to adopt Ordinance Number 022024. Any further debate, discussion? None, City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro-Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Okay, move on to item number six. Ordinance Number 032024, City Attorney?
Ordinance 03-2024. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale Futurane Use Map Amendment by changing the Futurane Use Map designation of several parcels of property legally described as lots 1 through 14 Park Villas, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 38, page 74 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 108, 110, 112, 114, 116, 118, 120, 122, 124, 126, 128, 130, 132, and 134 Washington Avenue in lots 15 and 15.01 Park Villas Phase 2, according to the plat book thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 41, page 6 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 104 and 106 Washington Avenue, from C1 Commercial to R2 Residential, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. The companion rezoning ordinance is Ordinance 04-2024. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard, Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment for several parcels of property legally described as lots 1 through 14 Park Villas, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 38, page 74, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 108, 110, 112, 114, 116, 118, 120, 122, 124, 126, 128, 130, 132, and 134 Washington Avenue in lots 15 and 15.01 Park Villas Phase 2, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 41, page 6 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 104 and 106 Washington Avenue, from the current city's C1 low-density commercial zoning district designation to the city's R2 medium-density residential zoning district designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here, too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, and an effective date. Second, second and final reading, also a public hearing item of both these ordinances, Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney. Any questions, counsel, for the staff? Seeing none, it's a public hearing item, we'll open it up to the public. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward or raise your hand. Same one line, I'm looking. No hands raised, no public comment. We'll go ahead and close and bring it back to the council.
Make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 032024.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Davis to adopt Ordinance Number 032024. Any further debate, discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro-Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance 032024 passes 5-0. Next ordinance?
Make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 042024.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Davis. Any further debate or discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance 04-2024 passes 5:00. Moving on to agenda item number seven, ordinance number 05-2024. City attorney?
Okay, 05-2024. An ordinance of the city council of the city Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale futural land use map amendment by changing the futural land use map designation for several parcels of property legally described as the Oaks condominium phases 1, 2, 3, and 4, and located at 201 International Drive, from C1 Commercial to R3 Residential, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances, resolutions, severability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. The companion rezoning ordinance is ordinance 06-2024. An ordinance of the city council of the city Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment for several parcels of property legally described as the Oaks condominium phase 1, 2, 3, and 4, and located at 201 International Drive, from the current city's C1 low-density commercial zoning district designation to the city's R3 medium-density residential zoning district designation, providing the subject to the subject, the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, and an effective date. This is second and final reading, also a public hearing items. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. City council, any questions for staff? Seeing none, this is a public hearing item. Anyone would like to speak, please come forward. And anyone online, please raise your hand. We are on ordinance number 05-2024 and ordinance number 06-2024. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Back to the council.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 05-2024.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Jackson. Any further debate, discussion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Council, Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance 05-2024 passes 5:00. Next item?
Make a motion to adopt 06-2024.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis and a second by Councilmember Davis to adopt ordinance number 06-2024. Further debate, discussion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance 06-2024 passes 5:00. Moving on to agenda item number eight. I think we can get through this one before we'd have to extend time. City clerk? Or I'm sorry, city attorney?
Okay, ordinance 07-2024. An ordinance of the city council of the city Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale futural land use map amendment by changing the futural land use map designation of several contiguous parcels of property generally located between Washington Avenue and Adams Avenue and west of Point Setta Avenue, which are legally described as lots 1 through 4 of the Velagio Town Homes, according to the plat thereof, recorded at Plat Book 55, page 92, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, located at 103, 105, 107, and 109 Washington Avenue. Vacant tax parcels 24-37-23-CG-1-4 and 24-37-23-CG-1-5 located on Washington Avenue. Tax parcels 24-37-23-CG-1-16 located at 128 Adams Avenue, and lots 14A, 14B, 14C, and 14D of the Breezeway Townhouses, according to the plat thereof, recorded at Plat Book 31, page 59, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, located at 120, 122, 124, and 126 Adams Avenue, from C1 Commercial to R2 Residential, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. The companion rezoning ordinance is ordinance 08-2024. An ordinance of the city council of the city Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment of several contiguous parcels of property generally located between Washington Avenue and Adams Avenue and west of Point Setta Avenue, which are legally described as lots 1 through 4 of the Velagio Townhouses, according to the plat thereof, recorded at the Plat Book 55, page 92, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, located at 103, 105, 107, 109 Washington Avenue. Vacant tax parcels 24-37-23-CG-1-4 and 24-37-23-CG-1-5 located at Washington Avenue. Tax parcel 24-37-23-CG-1-16 located at 128 Adams Avenue and lots 14A, 14B, 14C, and 14D of the Breezeway Townhouses, according to the plat thereof, recorded at Plat Book 31, page 59, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, located at 120, 122, 124, and lot 26, 126 Adams Avenue, from the current C1 low-density commercial zoning district designation to the city's R2 residential, density residential zoning district designation, providing for the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, and an effective date. This is second and final reading and public hearing item. Mayor?
Thank you very much. City attorney, any questions for staff, council? Seeing none. Public hearing item, ordinance number 07-2024 and 08-2024. Anyone would like to speak, please come forward and/or raise your hand if you're listening online. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Bring it back to the council.
Make a motion, we accept ordinance number 07-2024.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, second by Councilmember Willis to adopt ordinance 07-2024. Any further debate or discussion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance 07-2024 passes 5:00. Next ordinance?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 08-2024.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Davis to adopt ordinance 08-2024. Any further debate or discussion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance 08-2024 passes 5:00. All right, we've already completed agenda item number nine, which was ordinances number nine and number 10. We'll skip ahead to agenda item number 10, but before doing so, and before we get to the 10 p.m., we need to, I think, extend.
Make a motion to extend to 10:15.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis and a second by Councilmember Davis to extend tonight's regular council meeting to 10:15. Any further debate, discussion? None. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Extension passes 5:00. Yes, item number 10, city attorney?
Ordinance 11-2024. An ordinance of the city council of the city Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale futural land use map amendment by changing the futural land use map designation for property legally described as the Canaveral Breakers Annex Apartments, a condominium inclusive of all units in common area as described in and according to the Declaration of Condominium, recorded in the official records book 1128, page 181 to 202, inclusive as amended, all of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and which is located at 8522 North Atlantic Avenue, from C1 Commercial to R2 Residential, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. The companion rezoning ordinance is ordinance 12-2024. An ordinance of the city council of the city Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment as several, for several parcels of property legally described as the Canaveral Breakers Annex Apartments, a condominium inclusive of all units in common area, as described in and according to the Declaration of Condominium, recorded in the official record books 1128, page 181 to 202, inclusive as amended, all of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and which is located at 8522 North Atlantic Avenue, from the current city's C1 low-density commercial zoning district designation to the city's R2 medium-density residential zoning district designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, and effective date. Second and final reading of both ordinances and public hearing item. Mayor?
Thank you, city attorney. Any questions for city staff, council? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and public comment item.
You're on agenda item number 10. This is ordinance number 11-2024 and ordinance number 12-2024. If you'd like to speak, please come forward. And if you're listening online, please raise your hand. You'll be recognized. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Bring it back to the council.
Make a motion, we adopt ordinance number 11-2024.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum, a second by Councilmember Davis to adopt ordinance number 11-2024. Any further debate or discussion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance 11-2024 passes 5:00.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 12-2024.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum to adopt ordinance number 12-2024. Any further debate, discussion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance 12-2024 passes 5:00. We're on to item number 11 in the agenda, which is ordinance number 13-2024 and 14-2024. City attorney?
Yeah, ordinance number 13-2024. An ordinance of the city council of the city Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale futural land use map amendment by changing the futural land use map designation for a portion of Lot 3, Block 9, Cape Canaveral Beach Gardens, Unit Number 2, as recorded in Plat Book 17, page 81 and 82, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, which is located at 102 East Central Boulevard, from C1 Commercial to R2 Residential, providing the property to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. The companion rezoning ordinance is ordinance number 14-2024. An ordinance of the city council of the city Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment for a portion of Lot 3, Block 9, Cape Canaveral Beach Gardens, Unit Number 2, as recorded in Plat Book 17, pages 81 and 82, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, which is located at 102 East Central Boulevard, and from the current city's C1 low-density commercial zoning district designation to the city's R2 medium-density residential zoning district designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, and an effective date. Second and final reading of these ordinances, public hearing item as well. Mayor?
Thank you, city attorney. Council, any questions? Seeing none. This is a public hearing item. If anyone would like to speak, we're on item number 11, ordinance number 13-24 and 14-2024. Those of you who'd like to listen or participate online, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Back to the council.
Make a motion, we adopt ordinance number 13-2024.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum and a second by Councilmember Willis to adopt ordinance number 13-2024. Any further debate, discussion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance 13-2024 passes 5:00.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 14-2024.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Davis and a second by Councilmember Willis to adopt ordinance number 14-2024. Any further debate or discussion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance 14-2024 passes 5:00. We're on to item number 12 on the agenda, ordinance number 15-2024 and 16-2024. City attorney?
Okay, ordinance number 15-2024. An ordinance of the city council of the city Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale futural land use map amendment by changing the futural land use map designation for lots 11, 12, and 13, Block 13, Avon by the Sea, according to the map or plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 3, page 7, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 108, 112, 114, and 116 Madison Avenue, from C1 Commercial to R2 Residential, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. The companion rezoning ordinance is ordinance number 16-2024. An ordinance of the city council of the city Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a zoning map amendment for parts, lots 11, 12, and 13, Block 13, Avon by the Sea, according to the map or plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 3, page 7, of the public records of Brevard County, Florida, and located at 108, 112, 114, and 116 Madison Avenue, from the current city's C1 low-density commercial zoning district designation to the city's R2 medium-density residential zoning district designation, providing the property subject to this ordinance is more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached here too, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances, resolutions, severability, and an effective date. Second and final reading, also a public hearing item on these items. Mayor?
Thank you, city attorney. Any questions for staff, council?
Seeing none, this is a public hearing item for ordinance number 15-2024 and 16-2024. If you'd like to speak, please come forward or raise your hand if you're participating online. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Back to the council.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 15-2024.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Councilmember Willis. Any further debate or discussion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance 15-2024 passes 5:00.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 16-2024.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Davis, second by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum to adopt ordinance number 16-2024. Any further debate or discussion? Seeing none. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Ordinance 16-2024 passes 5:00, which brings us to the end of the public hearing items. Thank you very much. Give our city attorney a drink of water? Please. Thank you very much.
I have a water.
You have got quicker over the years. Doing great. All right, items for discussion, we're at 10:08 p.m. First item is number 13, EV charging stations, additional options, new trends, state-of-the-industry discussions, submitted by Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Jackson, this is your item. Please, floor is yours.
Okay, this item, I've literally added this in response to some emails we've gotten, but also citizen input. And what I'm really looking at, I know that we just upgraded our charging stations, and with that, we're now networked and we're monitoring those. We're able to charge for the, the power that we're using to charge up vehicles within our city. But I thought it would be good for us as a council to take a look at this because of the fact that there are trends with other cities and states as far as what they're doing to provide charging options within their cities. And I spoke with an engineer in two different cities. In this case, the engineer was working with the city council in these cities, and they implemented ordinances that, that required hotels of certain size to have a percentage of their parking spots be allotted for charging. Now, where we have this installed in our city, and I understand that it's been updated, it truly is a private industry type of service. I mean, we have fueling an electric vehicle by plugging in or running a gas station for internal combustion engine. But with SpaceX next door to us out in the Cape, we need to be, you know, we need to have options for our people that travel there as well as residents that have a car. However, when you look at it, and this was what really got me, I traveled for a living for many, many years. And when you look at where our charging stations are located, we've got one in Manatee Park that closes at dark. If I was a business traveler as a woman, I'd be sitting in a dark parking lot potentially with no one there. And I would be Ubering to pick my car up if I was staying in a local hotel or if I was a resident. So a lot of these changes that I'm seeing, that is through legislation, is, is literally being implemented to provide options besides having it solely be in providing... implemented to provide options besides having it solely be provided by the city. So literally, there's legislation in New York right now to require hotels and public, some public businesses to provide parking spots that have the EV charging. There are cities that are doing this as well. And think about a business traveler, if you're talking about someone coming out doing business with SpaceX, they're sitting in their hotel, they come back from work, they plug their car in at the hotel, the hotel has hospitality software that bills back to their room as well as a card swiper. They sit down, they charge their car, they go into their room, they're working on their laptop for four hours, they go back down, unplug their car, and they go to bed. And in these cases, they have them set up in other cities where the residences, the residents of the area can use them too by using a credit card. They go into the hotel lobby, they use the internet, they do some work on their PC, they have lunch, they have a drink, they are bringing in money for the hotel. So where the city, it's an expense for us as we look at moving forward with what kind of options we will have out there, because it will certainly, well, let's say this, there are industry things happening, and I'm going to get to that as well, but there's a potential that if it grows, if charging an EV vehicle grows, we would want to look at the best options that we could give citizens as well as travelers to our area. Now, having said that, as someone that runs a business and has been in private business all my life, we need to look at this. If we're going to provide this service as a council, we need to look at it like it's a business. And at the end of the year, if you invest in something in a business and you made no money, you're not in business anymore, or you're filing bankruptcy, okay? So we need to keep a handle with the market on what's going on with this. And this is why I added this item, because there's been big changes since the end of September in the EV charging industry, or EV industry in general. There's been around just shy of 4,000 dealers that have gone, that have written a letter to our president wanting to stop the requirement to sell the EVs. We have had multiple battery operators that are laying off. Ford shut down their Ford Lightning program. SpaceX, excuse me, Tesla, I had to recall, all of theirs with autopilots. So in any business, in any industry, we want to look at what's happening so that we can realign if needed, and that's why I brought this on, this agenda item on. We're going to, with SpaceX next door, we're going to, it's my opinion, we'll always have a demand for that. It's my desire that we'll be smart about it, because I don't believe that we should cost citizens money at the end of the year, and that's why I brought this agenda, or this discussion item to the table. So you'll see, I've included some articles, and one thing I will tell you, there is a ton of information out there right now. There are some people that are going into the swipers like we just implemented here in the city of Cape Canaveral, and we need to, in my opinion, I would love to be able to see that we're competitive in charging these rates so that we make sure we're getting our money back. And from what I understood, and I'm, our city manager, Mr. Morley, will correct me if I'm not.
Point of order, one moment to interrupt. We're at 10:15, we will need an extension, because we don't want to go over.
Okay.
And then the floor is back to yours if we can get it, so.
Okay.
Looking for a motion to extend.
I'll make a motion to extend.
I'll second.
Till 10:30.
I'll second.
Got a motion to extend to 10:30 PM and a second by, I'm sorry, a motion by Councilmember Jackson to extend to 10:30 PM, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Kellum. Any further debate, discussion? Seeing none, city clerk.
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion passes 5:00. Councilmember Jackson, back to you.
Okay. So from my initial discussion, and I want to, our city manager will correct me if I'm off on my numbers. We had a grant on the initial install where we only spent around $20,000, I believe, as a city. Is that correct, Todd, him off on that?
A grant for the initial installation?
Uh huh.
From?
What was the citizen, what was out of the general budget that we paid for the install on the chargers in the beginning?
From six years ago or seven years ago? I don't have that information. I don't.
Okay, okay. And then we just had a $108,000 upgrade, correct?
Approximately.
And we had a $76,000 electric bill last year for the charging, and so we've got the stations updated right now. I believe that's what I saw in the budget for the year. So my whole point of this is not to point out what, what we've, you know, to dig into what we spent. Yes, it's, we've got an investment in this as a city, but we need to make sure that we're not spending on this when we're not getting our return on our investment for this equipment, because the citizens are paying for this. So when you look at some of the things, I gave the article, the attachment one shows that we've got some examples out there now where we can compare our rates, which I am sure Zach has done, Zach is really good at looking at these things. Then you'll see attachment two talks about some of the changes within the market. We've had GM abandon their, their plans to build 400,000 EV pickups during, by mid-2024. We also, and that is shutting down, Ford is also cutting the Ford F-150 Lightning factory, so they cut their entire night shift on this. So there's massive shifts going on in the industry right now, and if I was looking at this like a business, I would be looking at that, because we need to make sure we're adjusting so that we can cover our expenses on the money that we have out there, the investment we've made. So the, there's an article, attachment four, they've come out and said, well, gas was supposed to go away, we thought there was going to be a lot more EVs. That has not turned out to be true, it's an opinion article from Bloomberg. So there's tons of information out there. I literally have, this is just a small stack of it. So, and, and so we need to look at what's going on in the market. I know that when we put in the, excuse me, when we put in the, the card swipers onto the chargers, that we were looking at what was going on then. There has been a ton of information and a ton of changes that have happened in the last two months, even over Christmas. I was amazed. So I wanted to bring this to council's attention only because we may have to look at ways to enhance this so that we can make a plan for going forward, but also, and I know that I've spoken with our city manager, I know that they're watching costs, they have the ability now, and all of those things. I still would be super interested to see when we would see our return on investment with maintenance and all of the costs so far, but I think we need to start opening our options, because what I was going to say earlier when we motioned to extend, as someone that traveled, I traveled for many, many years, I would feel very uncomfortable sitting for four hours in a parking lot at the city, at the library, or at Manatee Hall now, or Manatee Park. So I think we need to look at those things, and especially since it becomes an asset and an amenity to a hotel. So we have them being offered in hotels and in private businesses that take on that expense with a certain amount of parking spaces and literally gives the people that are charging more options.
Thank you. I assumed you were finished, I just was.
I am.
Thank you, council. I'll just start by saying thank you for putting this on. I know that we've received emails. Thank you, Andrea, and thank you for the supporting data. I think we've all talked and interfaced with city staff, and I think, when you look today, we've put in six, six pedestals with the capability to charge 12 vehicles, and this conversation deserves more time. It does, and we want to do it right. I've been following it as close as I possibly can. I've got some, some data, you know, coming in early, but the return on investment approach, amen. I mean, that should be applied to as much as we possibly can. The C5, it's a revenue-based, are both of our enterprise funds are good examples of that, but when we get into these types of services, it is important, and my comments, I could, I have, I think, more to say, but I want to give the council a chance to speak as well, other than I agree that we want to keep this in front of us. I look forward to getting some reports that come out, and what I hope the report shows is more of a detailed historical account in like a spreadsheet format from the date we purchased it, the ongoing costs, and then some sort of expected maintenance, right? Ongoing, I know that there's fees that are based on uses, but we could make some projections early. I think roughly six, a little over $600 has came into the city. In the first 26 days, 99 charging sessions occurred, and in the, in the next 15 days, another 86 charging stations. And so it is being used, but no one can predict the future, no one can tell what's going to happen. I know that our hotels today have already invested in EV charging stations. Now they keep them to their guests. I think behind.
Tai Tai.
Tai Tai, we are going to see the most powerful charging capabilities on the barrier island with Level 3 charging stations, which we're talking 20 minutes to an hour. I think those will be needed, but yes, if we start to see a surplus in the supply of EV charging and the demand for cars is not there, we're going to be in trouble, and I think the way we avoid that is, we've installed six today. I can't see the projections, I see those cuts, 400 less, but every one of these EV manufacturers had record-breaking years. You have to read those headlines very carefully. It'll say they cut 400,000, but they will not tell you that they doubled or tripled over a two or three-year period. They cut their projections. There are legitimate concerns across the entire auto industry, but what does that mean for Cape Canaveral? We need to be paying attention to it no matter what, and I think as long as we've got residents like Andrea who are helping keep an eye on it, I read those emails, but I want to spend a little bit more time talking about this, and I think we're under a time crunch unfortunately.
Oh, no.
So that's all I wanted to say.
No, and I appreciate that. I don't want to keep everyone over as, any longer than we have, but I do wish that we could, you know, have data available going forward with what is happening with the industry, because without knowing that, you can catch yourself off guard.
Yep.
You know, if charging drops, we don't get our money on the stations. And so we need to be, and I know Zach will do it, we need to be watching the reports on the chargers, knowing what the trends are now that we've got these installed, so that we can keep up with that on a regular basis, and I know we will. But as we go forward, we, I would love to make sure that we're getting a good report on those things so that we can keep our eye on it. That's great on the hotels. I was not aware that they were doing that in some of the hotels here. It would be great if they partner with the community so they know.
Yeah.
And see, that's great, because people need options on this. I've talked with people, and they have wanted, I know one girl, she was driving over to Cocoa, you know, off of 520 on the way to 95 to charge. And so it's good for people to know what our options are if they're being installed in other areas, just because some may not go sit in the parking lot, and some of them may hop a bike and that's, go to one that's closer, you know, throw their bike in the trunk and that sort of thing.
Can I, can I ask, Todd, you may be able to answer this, do we pay for the maintenance? Or does the company that put them in pay for the maintenance?
Dave, do you have that answer?
I think there's an initial maintenance provision along the contract.
And there's a, there's a five-year warranty, or a certain warranty period as well?
Yeah.
Four years? So we also will have committed to a quarterly report on the usage statistics, costs, and revenue from it, and anything else. We can run a report anytime we want, but we want to do it quarterly, so we actually have, this is now 90 days of data, it's more reliable.
December 5th was the first day, I think they went live, so January 5th, February 5th, about March, early March, we'll have our first 90 days, and yes, if we overextend, we could get in trouble. Councilmember Willis, any comments?
Well, just speaking from a business standpoint, you know, you can, you can find all the negatives, pros and cons for anything. And part of the reason these auto industries have compressed, if you will, on their production has been lithium and batteries. Well, now we have some of the largest deposits of lithium in the US, and they're going to start mining that between, I think there's, one of the largest is in Nevada, and then there's one in Quebec, excuse me. So that's going to change the dynamics of that. So, you know, as lithium, we're not dependent upon China any longer, so that changes how those batteries are going to be made.
Now, when does that go into place, those plants?
Plants? You mean mines?
The lithium mines, yeah.
They're already starting.
Okay.
They're starting to.
I just checked, and right now, the current statistic is 60% of their vehicle production is out of China for EVs, and 76% is out of, of the lithium battery production is out of China currently. So it's probably dropped off from what you're saying.
Well, it's going to take a while for it to, for it to grow legs, but it will be coming. I mean, those are just going to be changes. You're going to have ebbs and flows on everything, so.
And the other thing, one of.
Got a point of order, we're at 5:29, one minute prior.
Okay.
Just want to.
The other thing?
Mayor Pro Tim, we're going to need to extend.
Okay, okay.
There's one more agenda item.
Oh, okay.
I would like to just briefly state that, and I have a comment, but if we could, I want to continue this conversation. Can we, at the next council meeting, roll this in to an earlier discussion?
That's fine.
Because I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to learn together and talk and work through this, opposed to watching the headlines fly and then seeing the decisions we make and trying to figure out, but please, if we could get a motion, we're at 10:30 now, 10 minutes, just so we can clean wrap up and give everyone a report.
I'll make a motion to extend for 10 minutes.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Jackson, a second by Councilmember Willis. City clerk?
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Motion to 10:40 passes. Councilmember Jackson.
Okay, the other one, the other thing we may want to take a look at, and you may know, Don, is I know that battery recycling plants have been open in the US, they're all up north, and they charge a fee, so I'm curious what's happening in Brevard for recycled lithium batteries for cars, and whether they're being shipped out of here, because they leach into groundwater, and that concerns me for our lagoon, so that's something we might want to take a look at, trying to find out too, so we know the situation for it.
Mayor Pro Tim Kellum? Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
I think that's a good idea to look into that. And both the, I want to bring this forward in, in a discussion, you know, at the next meeting that we need to, you know, run this as a business and make sure we're not losing money.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it, councilwoman Jackson.
City manager, any comments, anything?
We'll be happy to provide any data or information you want. I understand we're going to place this earlier on the agenda next month, but it will be up to councilmember Jackson to retool the item. Any way that you want to will still be your discussion item. So Mia will get with you during the next several weeks.
Perfect. I will need help retooling.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, well. Okay, so that, that takes us to the end of that item. The last item here is discussion item. I, this is. I lost my way here late in the meeting, there it is. Item number 14, discussion on a monthly financial reports budget and CIP. I submitted this item. Had a chance to meet with the city manager and finance director and we talked about the idea of adding in capital improvement plan in a summer, this basically the summary sheet that's provided in our green books at the end of the year. Any of our budgets that shows CIP, the projects, and then it'll have really budgeted in actuals over the past, you know, three years or looking for past year two and then looking forward three to five years. And instead of, you know, looking forward, talked about, can we just see what was this year's budgeted amount? We discussed having the year to date actuals with that. Discussed just the key information, when the project is projected to complete. And then maybe a notes or just a general status of some sort. I respected that, hey, if that takes some time, that's totally understandable. But in a future meeting, when we're ready to have that sort of dashboard view of all those projects. And we did talk about, hey, which projects, heavy hitter projects, you know, having a dollar threshold. And be my recommendation that while, you know, a new baffle box or some insignificant project may not be important, it would be easier just to take that budget book or that template or same framework and just show them all. I think it's a manageable amount. Now, there might be some that it just doesn't make sense in another fund. But as much as we can, this will be an evolving document that will be included, or the idea is to include it as an information item with the budget today. And the other question was if that's something this council wants to do. Are we okay with the budget today? We had a chance to talk about that. I said, if there's, you know, when I say okay with the format, the goal was prior years, this was not included. So item number 15 in the agenda, which is an informational item. John and his team put this together and it gives sort of a summary overview, year to date actuals. And it's very much appreciated since they've been doing this because a lot of the decisions we make are financial or land use has financial impacts. And so we're able to use this information item in a meeting and always have as most reasonably current as we can, what's going on in the budget. And so if there are recommendations or improvements on this, I don't know if now's the time. I think keeping it was the request of staff and I'm fine with that. I was hoping if there's something overly burdensome on their side, hey, no long, we no longer have to do it. But they're fine with keeping it and adding in some sort of CIP summary sheet. They might've had some new thoughts since then. I certainly want to have a chance to let them talk, but I want to always try to work through the council as much as possible and see what you think.
Mr. Mayor, I understand that we're working on a GIS system that will have the CIP projects and milestones and where we're at on how much money is spent and whatnot. And I think Tim probably could speak to it better because he and I have talked about this multiple times, being able to look at.
Yes.
Those milestones and see where we are in real time. So, Tim?
Hello?
Yeah.
Is this home?
Yes.
Okay, so the GIS system that we're looking at right now is created or is ran by SRE. Each department will have its own. We've already looked at who's going to be running, which person's going to be running, whatnot. I'm going to give you an example of what I'll be doing, running the capital project side. So when I come up with a project, I'm going to be able to put it on a map where anybody, all the residents, any council members, anybody can go to that map. Go down, hit the, hit the icon, or I think it's like a little bubble. Click on it and a whole bunch of information will come up. That information's going to include where we are with, with the project. And it's going to be updated possibly on a weekly, biweekly schedule. It's going to give you what CIP number is being used for. It's going to include how much money has been spent into the project already. It's going to include what percentage of the projects complete and possibly just small little notes here and there of what's going on with the project. Kind of like the weekly update, you know how you get a little tidbit here and there? I'm going to put that on each one of my projects. Now those projects, once they're 100% complete, can stay on the map. So if anybody has, you know, questions or anything, they'll say, well, I think that project was done a couple of years ago. Let me go look, you can actually click on it and still see the project up there. How much, how much we spent on it at the end, what CIP number was used at the end and when it was completed. So I'm going to be doing that. And I think a lot of other departments are going to be utilizing GIS. It's a very wonderful tool. In fact, it's, it's long overdue, I think. It's, it's very in depth. We're going to be able to do a lot of stuff with that. But, but budgeting projects and stuff like that, it's very transparent when it comes to residents, council and everything else. It's going to show everything.
Thank you.
Yeah.
As long as, I love GIS, SRE is like the backbone of all, you know, GIS. And so having that geographic visual, that's how we think. You can see geographically how much money you're putting into the wastewater plant, the visual and where on what streets, you know, money capital. Titusville's utilizing some of that. If you go to their economic, you can see projects and things, but not to that scale. That's really exciting. But being able to still see a table on a one pager, is that?
Yeah, so our meeting with the mayor, his question was, I don't know if anything's changed. And said, no, exactly, just as we discussed, the monthly financials stay intact. We're already working on a CIP and each program that's $100,000 or more, it'll show the actuals to date. And there'll be a column and it'll have all the CIPs, but it'll have, it'll show the actual state. And there'll be a remarks or status section that the directors or project.
Manager.
Project managers, thank you, will go to and they could update. So we'll do everything just the way we do. And then we'll have that CIP Excel spreadsheet like, like you had asked for. And we'll put that in the agenda, in the agenda.
Report.
We're preparing the book, the shared drive, whatever for council. And then the, it's very easy, then the project managers just jump right into that file and they put their statuses there. And then I finalize it saying it's complete. And then Mia's got it right in her thing for her council meeting.
Yeah, when the mayor asked us for this, we were very happy to oblige immediately. Of course, we'd be happy to provide that information. So this is the framework, as John discussed, we'd like to start with, knowing this could evolve. And actually, when GIS comes involved, comes on board, it might be reason to take this out of the report at that point because we got a place that not only the council gets once a month, anybody can look at anytime they want.
And it's a living, it's a living document. So what we're going to do for you is in February, when you have the February council meeting, whatever financials we're reporting on them, which I believe will be December's, then those, that December report, those CIPs will be in concert with the end of December, which will show you where we're at and the comments by the project managers. And that'll be your, for your first look where you can view that. And like the mayor had a discussion with us, is if it needs to be tweaked, you want to see something else, then we'll just do it. But this will be a good first run and it's going to be just like you asked.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
That's all I had, and I know we're at the end. Again, thank you all. Counsel, any more discussion on that? It's my item, I'm finished. Just wanted to share. Okay. Do you want to go through reports briefly? Okay.
I went to basically the cities. People have seen on the TV with, because of the Form 6, a lot of council members have designed over the state, around the state. We had five in the city, Gard County, two in Melbourne Village, two in Grand, and one in Indy Atlantic. Because of that, they're going to, the city is going, the League of Cities is going to be hosting like a seminar on how to do the Form 6s and what's going to be required in that. I believe it's going to be held in Cocoa. They're still trying to get information together and a date. So we'll be invited, city managers invited, city clerks and all that are invited just so we all know where, what we're supposed to do and not do. Another thing is we discussed, I know a sample about the violin being at the, when Cape Canaveral hosts the League of Cities. I did contact a lady and she is looking into getting the violin orchestra there. And then just because we don't have our lobbyists, anything that you need from the city, you go between, you know, you can ask me and I'll find out all the information through the city for you. I think that's it. Oh, and I also gave you a bunch of information on the bills and everything that the league provided me.
Thank you, I received those here and that's very helpful. And thank you for that update and your continued involvement with that on behalf of the city. Okay, any other reports, councilmember Davis?
No, I'm fine.
Councilmember Willis?
Yeah, we're doing a Coffee with a Cop Monday, February 5th from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at Cherry Down Park. Free. Yeah, well, okay. It's, it's donut with a cop, a council member.
That was January.
February 5th.
February 5th, Coffee with a Cop. Thank you, councilmember Willis. Councilmember Jackson?
I've been working with Blue Water Research Institute, which was, was part of MRC for the council, for the lagoon. She, I have gotten a request to partner with them on a whale watch, right whale watching for our area because of the whales deaths for babies specifically. They're getting hit by boats and with their increased traffic at the port, I'm looking at how I can partner with them and perhaps do something with us here at the city where we can be in partnership with them, starting a whale watching program.
Blue Water?
Uh huh, Blue Water Research Institute. And I'll get that information, contact information for you.
Thank you. Got to take care of our whales. Mayor Pro Tim Kellum.
Oh yes, I just would like to say, I've had a lot of compliments and a lot of people interested and excited about the Veterans Park being underway and coming together. I'm really excited about it and, and people in the community are really grateful that we're kicking it off and getting it done. So thank you to staff and everybody working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, I have just a few. I want to show you something here. I received a message online from Ms. Sandy Klots. Sandy was a volunteer in Cape Canaveral. And she reached out, I think back when Mayor Porter was the mayor and she had worked as a volunteer and she heard about the Cape Center and the ability to share old things and the call the city did. And she mailed to me, which, to the city, a couple of artifacts, if you will, from the ancient 1984, I was two. But this was a second annual Cape, I'm teasing, 1984, Second Annual Cape Canaveral Firefighters Ball. This is back when a former mayor, Pat Lee was actually the chief. And I was flipping through it, very cool. Thank you so much, Sandy. And then she donated her, her vest that she wore, which has the Cape Canaveral Volunteer Fire Department there on the back.
Awesome.
And with her name. And so as we see fit, this can be displayed and I will give this to whoever's the most appropriate. But I wanted to recognize her and encourage anyone else who wants to donate, please do. And I'm excited about that coming in, so thank you again. And feel free to pass that down if you want to see. There was an essay contest, I think it was coming from the Florida League of Mayors. If I were elected mayor for sixth, seventh and eighth graders, so Cocoa Beach High and any of the other middle schools just want to make an announcement, help spread the word. I think the deadline's coming up here, short window, maybe just 10 more days. But a short essay can get them a scholarship from the Florida League of Mayors. And if any of those schools would like, I can come in and speak to them briefly to encourage it. Please let me know. Sea oats planting is coming up, y'all be ready. Want to thank Zach and Dr. Jason Evans and the entire team who going out and taking water samples. And Tim, we had a chance to talk and get excited about what Mayor Pro Tim was talking about with the rain garden. These guys were out in the middle of the storm and it was good. It was really cool to see what they were doing and that project's exciting. The, I'm just going through my notes here. That concludes the reports. And the last thing I want to talk about is more of a serious issue. I'm very excited about things, but, you know, I've been doing this for, since 2017. It's been five years and it's been an honor, thrilling and challenging, but, and we have made some great progress. But there has been, over the recent months, in the past year 2023, some challenges that I've worked with our, our city manager and supporting staff through that continue in the city. I'm not going to say that we're different than any other city, but I also don't want to accept that that's just the way it is. I'm encouraged that our city manager is going to help work through those challenges, largely around community development. But I think this whole council has received some emails. We've been made aware of some issues here locally. I've tried to forward those on to our city manager every time. And I really, I'm at the point to where I would like to talk with the council about these issues together at a special meeting and supporting staff and work through these as a, as a council within our capacity and, and, and support our city manager. It's late, I know we have to go. I was hoping to have more time to explain those. But under the Community Development Hub, a very difficult area, there are some properties on Fillmore Avenue, properties. I'll just leave that one by itself for now. And there are other properties, I think, would be no stranger to any of us, to where it's been complex. But the amount of time that these properties have taken to, for me as a mayor, to work through, to understand, has been significant. It's been taxing, it's been costly. And we have strengths and gifts and talents here on this council that I want to tap into. And I want everyone to be rowing together, moving forward and, and aligned with our city staff. And I am at the point to where I think that's the next best step for us to take. And so please be on the lookout. I'll work with city staff to try and find a date that would work. But I will follow the procedures to request a special meeting to discuss those properties and the circumstances. And I'd like to do it before the next council meeting. I do think that this is something that is urgent on my, on my plate. And again, I am confident, especially for some of the changes I've seen recently with, with city manager facilitating and helping me understand some things. But after that meeting, this to me is that final step that I think could relieve. But after that meeting, this to me is that final step that I think could relieve some of the tension that, that is felt. We are all in this together. We are all, we love this city, we all want to work together. But we're talking about a year to two years on some, some issues that we really need to use the best tools we have, and I think that meeting is a tool. And I'd like to, to get our idea hats on, our problem-solving hats, leverage the knowledge of our city staff, and try to resolve these issues as expeditiously as possible, because I know all of your phones ring, and it takes up our time. And I'd like to be freed of that so that I can go out and be the mayor, and that we can be the council that I think we all want to be and our community wants us to be. And so, it's not anyone's fault, it's just a product of, I think, the system. And I think through communication, we can take those walls down and overcome them. So, I'm not going to get into the details, but please be on the lookout. I did want to put a voice to that, and if you hear me say anything, it is to work through it together as a community, as a council. And I think that that's what our citizens want us to do. So, with that, I'll be in touch with you, Todd, first, city attorney, and we'll, we'll come to some dates. And if this council chooses, hopefully, we can get together and have a very productive meeting. And that's very helpful. I want to make sure we fit, and EV car is another example. Towards the end of the meeting, that does, our brains tend to be a little vibrating by that time, and so, that does deserve more attention. And with that, I will conclude. City manager, any reports from you?
The Coffee with the City Manager resumes this Friday at 10 o'clock at Manity Park.
Thank you for continuing to do that. City Attorney? You don't have a voice?
Just one other bill to put on your radar screen. 1084, proposing to preempt local governments from regulating EV charging stations.
1084?
Yes. Senate Bill.
Okay. Thank you. Sheriff's Department? Thank you. Any other reports from our teams? City Clerk's office? Thank you. With that, we'll, meeting adjourned.